Of order. The town meeting will convene at 7:00 PM.
Evening, I'm Michael Widmer, Town Moderator. We have a quorum for tonight's meeting, so I would like to call to order the continuation of the annual town meeting of the town of Belmont for 2021. Today's date, of course, is June 14, 2021. We begin the meeting as we do all meetings with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We now will Glenn will test our devices. So you're familiar with this process. Polls are open to just make sure your voting, turning point voting is working. All right, Glenn, let's see what we have here. All right, thank you. Please let us know if anybody has a issue, it doesn't appear to be so. So now let's, I'll turn to the, my opening remarks. Let me remind town meeting members in the public first that tomorrow at four o'clock, we have a ribbon cutting celebration and open house for the DPW project. And that is at 4:00 PM tomorrow. And I'll just say once more that Anne Marie Mahoney and the building committee have done a fantastic effort. And so join them if you want tomorrow and we'll have some delicious cake. Tonight, there are three major reasons to complete action tonight. First is the fact that the governor's emergency ends at midnight tonight. The emergency, which has allowed us to have virtual town meetings. Secondly, there seems to be a very strong sentiment. I certainly share it that on the part of town meeting members that we complete action tonight. And thirdly, it is, if we were to do a fifth night, it would take a lot of work and some expense. I'm not sure that town meeting members appreciate just how much work goes into these town meetings. And it's not a matter of saying, oh, well, we'll just meet some night at January middle or wherever. So combination of, I think, individual fatigue, logistics and the governor's emergency orders all come together to urge us to complete action tonight. In the email I sent to town meeting members, I referred to a couple of areas where we're going to combine motions tonight. I'll explain those when we get to them. What I want to underscore at the beginning here is that we're not going to deprive anybody of the opportunity to discuss those motions. We're simply trying to expedite the voting of the motions. So that's an important distinction. I don't want any town meeting member to feel that their rights to comment have been in some way circumscribed. And finally, as I said in my email, strongly urge town meeting members to keep their comments tonight to two to three minutes. We have seen in the past that focus comments, one to two minutes, often have a greater impact than longer speeches. And then if somebody has already made all of the arguments that you want to make, I think it's sufficient to say that I agree with so and so, perhaps add a word or two. But there is no reason to make the same points over and over. So I would urge focused, non repetitive remarks. Thank you, and thank you in advance for your cooperation. And I should add the obvious, please, with all the passions surrounding particularly Article 16, please, please, let's have a civil conversation and feel as strongly as you want about the issue. Let's make it civil and let's not impugn anyone's motives. With that, Ellen, please do the return of the warrant.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and town meeting members. I, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk, do hereby certify that I gave notice of the adjournment of the annual town meeting by remote participation held Wednesday, June 9, 2021, by posting an attested copy of the notice of adjournment on the town clerk's official bulletin board in the town hall and on the town website and at least five other places in town, giving notice that the annual town meeting had not yet been completed and had been adjourned to meet again Monday, June 14, 2021, by remote access, beginning at 7:00 PM, briefly stating the business to be acted upon, all in accordance with the Representative Town Meeting Acts of 1926 as amended and Section 30-110(c) of the general bylaws of the town.
Thank you, Ellen, and we will have the same procedures that Ellen has reviewed time and again during our virtual meetings. And I'll go to the order of the articles, I believe. So town meeting will hear the motions in the following order. 1, 13, 14, 18, 17, 15, 20, 21, 22, 16, 16 reconsideration. The, there's one report under Article 1, and then we will consider with your agreement, 13, 14, and 18 together, they are housekeeping articles. 17, 15, and 20, we will do individually, but those are traditional articles, non controversial. 21 moved to, we'll move to dismiss. So 22 is the budget and then 16 reconsideration. So when you look, it looks like a fair number, but when you really, as we focus on it, it really comes down to the town's budget, 22 and reconsideration. Should we next, Glenn? Now, don't we need to do the motion to? I believe we need to do the motion, preliminary motion. This is a preliminary motion, you're familiar with this. I hope this is the last time we have to do it. This gets town meetings agreement for the virtual meeting moved that the town meeting will meet and act on all matters on the warrant for this annual town meeting by means of the video and audio conferencing and voting technologies described in the moderator's March 1, 2020 letter to the select board posted with a warrant. So Glenn, if you want to open the polls and we will vote. Yes, if you support, no, if you don't, or abstain. Few seconds. All right, let's close the polls, Glenn. Ellen, do you have a couple of votes?
I do, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk, with preliminary motion votes from the emergency vote team, Pat Bruch, precinct two votes yes, Dawn Mercy, precinct eight votes yes.
So the final tally and the preliminary motion is 241 in favor, two opposed, and one abstention. Thank you. We now turn to Article 1. I will read the article and ask for unanimous consent. Move that Article 1 be taken from the table. I would ask for unanimous consent. There is one report under Article 1 tonight. Saying no objection. This motion is passed unanimously. We now turn to the one report under Article 1, as I've said, the Structural Change Impact Group, Travis Frank, Mr. Frank.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Travis Frank, Precinct 5, Chair of the Structural Change Impact Group. Please, next slide. So what is the Structural Change Impact Group? What Structural Change Impact Group, for those who don't know, was formed at the end of 2020 to look at the structural budget issues across Belmont. So as we all know, this was prior, about six months prior to the override in November's timeframe, in which the select board created a new committee, the Structural Change Impact Group, in order to look at three main areas for the town of Belmont. The, it is to help identify opportunities to increase the town's revenue opportunities, to decrease the town's costs, operating costs, maintenance costs, et cetera, or and/or to improve the delivery of town services. So we all know there's been a variety of different groups over the last 10 years. Prior to, you know, around the time I actually joined the town in 2010. And those include the warrant committee efforts over the years, the financial task force one, financial task force two. And this is the Structural Change Impact Group is another continuation of those types of efforts where the town is continually looking to improve its revenue opportunities, decrease its operating costs, and/or to prove town delivery of town services. So if you, please go to the next slide. We have a committee of 11 members as appointed by the select board. These are a great number of people who have both experience and also sort of new blood to the community. I'd say that, at least in my opinion, it covers a variety of expertise coming from prior groups, such as Mark Perillo, who's been on Financial Task Course 2, Warrant Committee members, Energy Committee member, Vision 21, but also then residents from, who aren't necessarily involved in all the other committees from across the town. So we have a great group of people. It's been highly effective and we're trying to do our best to move forward. But all of this is available on the town website. Next slide, please. So I apologize for some of the small print, but the main effort here that I'd like to do is just kind of recap and as quickly as possible in the five minutes or so that I've got to talk about what we've done. So again, the group was formed at the end of 2020. Our first effort and that was accomplished by February of this year was to look at the prior efforts among all the groups and really summarize them. So our, one of our goals as a committee is to bring together all of the prior efforts. And that includes looking back at the 2020 efforts, the 2015 reports, the 2020 reports, the warrant committee reports, various other reports. And we pulled all of those together into the February report that's available on the town's website. Additionally, we've held a one community forum and we're planning another in the early fall, September, October timeframe. But then we will also set up an online forum, which I'll talk about prior, sorry, just another slide. We have also sent out an email to solicit input on opportunities to increase revenue or save costs or improve the delivery of services to town employees and school employees that we just sent out last week. And for the future efforts is that the town, we are going to consult with town bodies, examine the best practices from other towns, review and evaluate all the ideas, which I'll just go over and again, about two slides from now. And then summarize all of this, hopefully, and later this year, around December 2021. The select board asked us to only have around a year timeframe. This is not a standing committee. This is, the Structural Change Committee is really focused on summarizing, evaluating ideas, and hopefully moving forward as quickly as possible. Next slide, please. So one of the things we did, and I pause a lot on this, is to really provide, allow us to collect as much input as possible. We created an online form. You can go to the tiny URL that's available at the top of that slide, so tinyurl.com/belmontchange. And it is an online forum, also hosted on the town's website to really solicit as much opportunity. So if you have an idea around how the town could increase revenue, decrease costs, and/or improve services, please submit that to us. We are evaluating all the ideas that come in through this portal. We collect the input weekly and evaluate that throughout the committee. And I say this because I know that whether you voted for the override or against the override, this is your chance to weigh in on town priorities and opportunities. So I know there's lots of discussions around budgets and there's lots of discussions around everything else, money related in Belmont. This is a way to collect it. This committee, the Structural Change Impact Group, is pulling together all of your best ideas and we hope to collect that and hand off the ideas to the relevant decision making bodies. So one thing I'll just emphasize here is our committee is not an implementing committee, but what we hope to do is help evaluate, screen, and provide clear next steps for the select board, the school committee, the town administrator, or whoever the decision body is. Next slide, please. We've collected over 350 ideas, some of which are duplicates there in the sort of deeper blue in the upper right hand corner. Many of them are new and you can see all of the ideas that we collected at the tiny URL there at the bottom, which is tinyurl.com/scigmatrix. We call it the matrix of all the ideas. Next slide, please. Oh, this turned out to be much smaller than it was on my computer, I apologize. But here, let me just cover some highlights we have. So we have things that you've heard of before, such as the GIC for health insurance, but we have other recommendations, which is coming from, say, the warrant committee of removing the retirement boards, the pension fund to a state run administrator. We have things about questioning pilot payments from various entities in town. We have energy efficiency improvements throughout town operations. Moving on, various other things that we've done in the past. We have reviewed town, all the town owned properties. So some of the duplicates we received are like, sell this building, sell that building, evaluate this building. Instead, we're going to try to take a holistic approach to see about real estate opportunities for town owned properties, examining growth potentials. That's sort of the left hand column of what we think are going to be some of the more impactful structural change issues, but we have another one of easy wins, which is just simply, you know, expand our efforts with the Collins program, look at getting a tax assessments faster, and also looking at just changing some of the operating hours of town administrations. Next slide, please. So I think the key thing here is that we really are looking for opportunities where this is a public, again, a public committee, we're having public forums. But we also have a forum in which you can, as of right now, submit your ideas. We are looking for ideas. We will eventually close this window, probably around the August timeframe, so that we don't have, you know, so we can focus on evaluating the remainder of the year and write up our reports. But right now is a great time to get involved. If you voted for something like that, voted for the override or did not vote for the override, or however you feel about structural change, I'm sure there's lots of good ideas among town meeting members and the town at large, and we encourage your inputs. We have another, we do meet regularly as a public venue. Our next meeting is Thursday, July 1st. So I pretty appreciate all of your inputs and the time allotted for me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, and thank you for leading this effort and the whole committee. It's obviously a huge amount of work, but it's going to be clearly beneficial to the town, so thank you. Now, we will put Article 1 on the table, move that Article 1 be laid on the table. I will ask unanimous consent. Saying no objection. Article 1 is approved unanimously. We now move to the consent agenda. I will read this motion and then explain specifically what we're going to do. Moved that the main motion under Articles 13, 14, and 18 on file with the clerk and distributed to each town meeting member prior to the town meeting be adopted. To save some time this evening, I'd like to see if we can get these three housekeeping articles out of the way in a single electronic roll call vote. These articles include Articles 13, which confirms a transfer from water retained earnings for the modular office units that was approved last year. The Department of Revenue has asked the town to revoke that transfer in a different form. Article 14, which allows the school department to enter into an agreement with state agencies to provide school transportation services to foster children, which it is already doing, and to get reimbursed for it. Article 18, which appropriates a small grant that the town receives from the state funded by revenue from ridesharing services like Uber and Lyft that must be used for transportation infrastructure. I'm going to ask each of the sponsors of these articles to read each main motion into the record. We'll then allow for a brief period for questions or comments directed to any of the three articles. Once complete, I will ask if we can have unanimous consent for the adoption of all three main motions in a single vote. In essence, voting the motion before you. If there is objection, we will have to vote each separately. With that, let's turn to Article 13. Mark Palolo, would you read the motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I guess my video is not working, but I think you can hear me.
Yes.
Mark Palolo, a member of the select board, town meeting member, precinct eight, moves that the town transfer $320,000 from fiscal 20 water retained earnings to the fiscal 21 water operating budget.
Both the select board and warrant committee have voted unanimously in favor. We now turn to Article 14. School reimbursement, Amy Checkaway.
Thank you, Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. Moved that the town authorized the Belmont School Department to sign a memorandum of understanding or MOU with the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Department of Children and Families, and the Executive Office of Health and Human Services to enable the Belmont School Department to receive reimbursement for the provision of school transportation services to foster children.
Thank you, and the votes of the select board, school committee, and warrant committee are all unanimous in support of Article 14. Article 18. Or I have time?
Sorry. Article 18 appropriation of transportation grant. Moved that the town appropriate $29,450 received from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund for the purpose of funding improvements to the town's transportation infrastructure as set forth under Article 18 in the warrant for this meeting.
And I should report the select board and warrant committee voted unanimously in favor of Article 18. So now we will open up for any questions or discussion on any of these motions, 13, 14, or 18.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk. At this time, we have two people with their hands raised, Leslie Aiken and Thomasina Olson.
Miss Aiken.
Just one question.
Please identify her.
I'm sorry, Leslie Aiken, precinct two. Does the town's transportation infrastructure include roads and sidewalks?
Ms. Garvin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. The money for the transportation grants is going to be used to fund design work for intersection improvements for Mill Street, Winter Street, and Concord Avenue.
Thank you, Tommy Olson.
Thomasina Olson, precinct five, Town Meeting Member. I just heard the use for it, but in the past, I believe Council on Aging was able to access some of that, those funds for the transportation that we do for seniors. And I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that, just repeat that that's what I believe we did in the past, so.
Ms. Garvin, did you want to comment on that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. Yes, we have, Ms. Olson used that, those funds for the senior center. Given the unusual year with COVID and the senior centers kind of dip in programming and their access to grant money for the Beldabas, we felt this was a better use of the money.
Thank you, maybe we'll come back next year.
Yep.
Thank you. I see no other hands. Are there?
Mr. Moderator, it appears that Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk, it looks that Leslie Aiken has a follow up question that was missed.
All right, Miss Aiken. Does you have a follow up, Leslie, or not?
I did not, I was just going to say thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, I don't see any further hands raised. So now I would ask for unanimous consent that we have one vote instead of three votes, as I explained on these three articles. So if anybody has an objection, please raise their hand and express it. I don't see any. So we will go to this motion on the consent agenda, and this vote will be to vote yes or no in favor of the three housekeeping motions that we've just put on the table. If you support all three, vote yes. Oppose, vote no. 10 more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. Final vote is 250 in favor, no oppose, zero oppose, one abstention. Final vote is 250 in favor, no opposed, zero opposed, one abstention. I don't know if there are any other. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman again, Town Clerk with emergency votes on the consent agenda for 13, 14, and 18. Dawn Mercer, Precinct Eight, votes yes. Pat Bruch, Precinct Two, votes yes.
So the final total is 252 in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention on the consent motion for Article 13, 14, and 18. Thank you all for your cooperation with that. We now turn to Article 15, salaries of elected officials. Mr. Palolo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Palolo, Select Board Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. Moved that there be paid to the elected offices of the town as salaries for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021. Amount set forth opposite the name of each officer as listed below. Officials of the town salary, Town Moderator, $450. Chair of the Select Board, $5,000. Two members of the Select Board, $4,500 each. The Town Clerk, $104,466. The Town Treasurer, $108,697. Chair of the Board of Assessors, $3,030. Two assessors, $2,200 each.
Thank you, and the vote of the Select Board and the Warrant Committee was unanimous in support of Article 15. So with that, we'll turn to any discussion, questions on Article 15. Saying none, we'll proceed to a vote. Pardon me, is there?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman. At this time, there are two people who have their hands raised, Andrea Moshari and Thomasina Olson.
Great, thank you. Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Andrea Moshari, Precinct Five. I'm just wondering what the salaries were last year for the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer, and what percentage of an increase this salary represents.
Ms. Garvin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I don't have the exact dollar figure, but I can tell you that it is a 2% living increase for both the Town Clerk and the Town Treasurer.
Okay, thank you. I will support this.
And Tommy Olson?
Thomasina Olson, Precinct Five, Town Meeting Member. I just asked the question that, is there an analysis of Town Clerk and Town Treasurer positions? It almost seems like the two should be consistent. I certainly know, and I'm not really trying to garner favor with our Town Clerk, but I have to say, I know the amount of work she does, and it just always strikes me that and I don't even know if this is a male-female thing. But I just wanted to point that out. I hope that we are doing. Let me just say, I hope that we will be doing a consistent evaluation of other Town Clerk and Town Treasurers of similar size and the amount that we handle. And it's only a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Is there any other discussion? Saying none. Oh, sorry, I guess there is one more. Yes, Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, it appears that Martin Plas has his hand up.
Martin, go ahead.
Yeah, Martin Plas, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I'm wondering if it's possible to pay these positions a bonus based on performance that could be added?
Ms. Garvin, do you have any sense of this?
Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator, the salaries set forth are the salaries for the elected officials. They are considered employees, but their salary is set by Town Meeting under this article. A bonus, I would have to say that that would have to be taken to a Town Meeting and approved by Town Meeting Members.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Saying none, let's go to a vote on Article 15. Glenn, the poll is open. If you support the salary motion, vote yes. If you oppose it, vote no. Few more seconds. All right, Glenn, let's see the tally. Ellen, do you want to port two votes?
I do, Mr. Moderator. It's Ellen O'Brien-Cushman again, the Town Clerk. On Article 15, Pat Bruch, Precinct Two, has voted yes, and Dawn Mercer, Precinct Eight, votes yes.
So the final totals then for Article 15 are 250, 250 in favor, one opposed, and two abstention. So thank you. We now go to Article 17. Mr. Dash.
Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Article 17 moved that the town establish expenditure limits for the revolving accounts authorized in Section 50-220 of the town's general bylaws for FY22 as follows. A, Senior Programs Fund, $150,000. B, Art Gallery Fund, $15,000. C, Rock Meadow Restoration and Maintenance Fund, $11,000. D, Library Lost Book and Copying Fund, $15,000. E, Stormwater Improvement Fund, $100,000. F, Martin Luther King Day Breakfast Fund, $5,000. G, Non-School Property Maintenance Fund, $60,000. H, Stormwater Consulting Fund, $50,000. Mr. Moderator, I guess if I may, just to briefly explain to some new Town Meeting Members, the revolving funds are funds where the money, money comes in and money goes out, and this sets the limits for them. For instance, an easy one is like the library fund. For instance, if you're overdue on your book, or you lose the book, you pay a fee to the, a fine to the library. The money goes into this fund, and then the library takes the money out and buys new books. That sort of thing.
Thank you, Mr. Dash, and the Select Board and Warrant Committee both support this unanimously. With that, we'll go to a discussion of Article 17. Go ahead, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. It appears people with their hands raised, or three, excuse me, Lisa Pargoli, Tommy Olson, and Juliet Jenkins.
We'll start with Lisa Pargoli. Ms. Pargoli?
Hi, thank you, Lisa Pargoli, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. Could you clarify what G is, a non-school property maintenance fund? It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. Could you explain what that is, and please?
Ms. Garvin? Or someone else?
Mr. Moderator, John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator. I can take that one.
Great, thank you.
Property Maintenance Fund are the the field funds. So this is the money that we collect from the field users. That money gets put back into the fields. It supports the park's operation with things like irrigation, seed, paint lining, things along those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thomasina Olson.
Thomasina Olson, Precinct Five. My understanding is that the Recreation Department provides classes and things. Do they not have a revolving fund? I didn't see a revolving fund for recreation.
Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. The Recreation Department used to have-
John, please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator.
Thank you.
The Recreation Department fees that are collected and expenses are in the general fund for those fees.
Have they always been that way, Mr. Marshall?
No, there was a 53D revolving fund that was set up previously, which is a little different than these revolving funds you see in front of you. That was not reauthorized a while back. I can't remember the exact year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Jenkins?
Hi, Julia Jenkins, Precinct Three. As someone who often has revolving fines, I'm just wondering, how much does the library take in? I always wondered if that was going back to the library, all that was taken in.
Has anybody here been able to answer that question, any Town official?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I think that if the Director, Peter Suzera, is on, he could most likely answer that question. I don't know if he's on the panel.
Thank you. Peter, are you here?
I am. Peter Suzera, Library Director. So the amount of money that the library takes in late fines has decreased fairly steadily over the last 10 years. I believe that the last allotment that we took in was somewhere, somewhere north of $10,000, somewhere south of $20,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kasumov.
Moderator, Elshat Kasumov, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Just a general question. What happens if the if the funds that are, or if fees and whatnot that are collected exceed the expenditure limit? What happens to the excess funds?
Ms. Garvin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. John, if you want to take that?
Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. The-
John Marshall.
Oh, sorry. Again, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator. The funds will stay in that revolving fund. They can only be expended up to the expenditure limit set each fiscal year by Town Meeting.
So this is an expenditure limit, not a revenue limit? Great, thank you. Catherine Bowen.
Thank you. Catherine Bowen, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. Mr. Marshall, could you explain how you arrived at the expenditure limitation for the non-school property maintenance fund?
Mr. Marshall?
John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator. That was actually set prior to my arriving here. However, in looking back at the last several years, the most that has ever been collected and expended out of that fund in a given year was $55,000. So we reassessed to see if that was appropriate for this year, but that was determined prior to my arrival.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further hands raised. So we'll go to a vote under Article 17. If you support the article, the revolving funds, vote yes. If you oppose, vote no. Few more seconds. All right, we'll close the polls. Go ahead, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman with emergency votes on Article 17. Dawn Mercer, Precinct Eight, votes yes. Pat Bruch, Precinct Two, votes yes.
So the final tally. 254 in favor, one opposed, one abstention. Thank you. That dispenses with Article 17. We now turn to Article 20. Mr. Epstein.
Roy Epstein, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. Article 20 moved that the town appropriate and transfer $50,000 from the general fund, free cash, and to appropriate and transfer a total of $29,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund, the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the Light Enterprise Fund to the other post-employee benefits, or OPEB, stabilization fund for the purpose of funding other post-employment benefits as follows. The town, 63.3%, is $50,000. Light Department, 21.5% for $17,000. Sewer Department, 5.7% for $4,500. Water Department, 9.5% for $7,500. And the total, 100%, is $79,000 even.
And the votes under this, the Select Board and the Warrant Committee voted unanimously in support, excuse me, in support of this motion. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, at this time, Town Clerk, sorry, at this time, there are two people with their hands up, Jeffrey Lubian and Sue Bass.
Thank you. Mr. Lubian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Lubian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I'm also a member of the Pension, OPEB, and Debt Subcommittee of the Warrant Committee, and I was also on the OPEB Working Group some years ago. I just wanted to call the Town Meeting's attention that this is the second year in a row that we're doing minimal funding for this. In years past, we've put as much as $600,000 into this. The last two years, we've had to curtail this because of the budget challenges and the override not passing. So just to keep that in mind, that we are now two years in a row of significantly underfunding this at historical levels that we have been funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Sue Bass?
Sorry, it does make a sense to unmute. I'm Sue Bass from Precinct Three. I just wanted to ask and really probably verify that these percentages reflect the proportion of non-school employees in these departments? And if not, how it's different?
Mr. Epstein or Mr. Lubian?
I think that question is best handled by Town Administrator Roy Epstein, Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Okay. Great, thank you. Patrice?
I'm sorry, Sue, could you repeat the question?
Yes. I would presume that these percentages represent the percentage of non-school department employees covered by OPEB, by Town- but I wanted to verify that.
Ms. Garvin?
Sure. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. Sure. Patrice Carvin, Town Administrator. The, the, what you see here is, is a formula that we asked the Town Treasurer for in terms of light sewer and water. For the town employee piece, we are at the minimum, which is the guidelines for the OPEB policy, which is $50,000.
That's actually not my question.
Miss Bass, please identify.
Sorry, Sue Bass, Precinct 3. I was saying, are, for example, the water and sewer employees, 9.5% of the total non-school town employees, and et cetera, for the whole list?
I'm going to refer your question to Floyd Carmen, and that does the calculation for the OPEB.
Mr. Carmen?
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
I can, Floyd.
Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. Sue, the formula is based on an actuarial schedule that is prepared by Kathy Riley. This is not anything that the Town of Belmont manufactures. We work closely with our actuary, and the actuary has all of the school and town employees. So from their perspective, that town, 63.3%, includes both town and school employees. The Light Department, those are all the employees in the Light Department. The Sewer and Water, those are all the employees that are labeled in the Sewer and Water Department. But this is all generated by an actuarial valuation from our consulting actuary, Kathy Riley from Siegel.
Sue Bass, Precinct 3. Thank you, Floyd. I'll go ahead and vote for it, but I really would like to see the detail on this at some point. Would you email it to me?
More than happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kazumov?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elshad Kazumov, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. What would, what is the long-term impact of this fund being continuously funded at the minimum amount? Specifically with regards to the town's ability to attract and retain employees?
Mr. Carmen, do you want to take a crack at that?
Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. I got to be honest about that, Mr. Moderator. I do not have an answer for that. This OPEB is voluntary. From the Town of Belmont's perspective, if you'll bear with me just for a minute, this is an irrevocable trust. We have a policy. It took probably about three or four years of getting approval by the Board of Selectment. As I said, this is voluntary. And it's looking at things from a long-term perspective because, in my humble opinion, in 2030, '31, '32, sometime in that timeframe, when our pension is all paid up, I think there'll be a mandatory amortization schedule where the state is going to mandate that we start paying into OPEB. And those numbers will probably be in the $4 or $5 million range. So we're trying to be very proactive as a town and contribute to our OPEB trust. This is not mandatory right now. This is voluntary from a town perspective.
And Roy Epstein, did you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Roy Epstein, Vice Chair of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct 6. The specific question was the effect of our OPEB contribution on ability to attract or retain employees. I believe the answer is nil because we are committed to fully funding the OPEB obligation. This, it's really just a timing question. We're trying to pay as much of that obligation now as we can to minimize the burden in the future that Mr. Carmen just referred to. So the more we can pay today, whether it's $50,000 or $600,000, will lessen the size of the contribution we have to make in the future. But one way or another, that obligation will be fully funded. So employees should, it should not be a factor in an employee retention decision.
Mr. Pallolo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Lilo, Select Board Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Let me ask, let me answer it this way. First and foremost, we are required to provide other post-employment benefits to all retired employees. So that will continue. We're on a page-to-go basis. From an actuarial point of view, we have an unfunded liability, no different than our unfunded pension liability. We are not, at this point, mandated by the legislature, the state legislature, to fund that as we are with the pension liability by 2040. Mr. Carmen is correct that at some point, the state legislature might require us to, might mandate, might mandate us to fund this by a certain date. But if they did that, then every, every, mostly municipalities in Massachusetts would be underwater. So the, the commitment has always been that once we fully fund our unfunded liability to the extent possible on the pension side, that we will return, we'll turn those resources to fund the unfunded liability for OPEB. But be, be that as it may, we are required by law to continue to provide this benefit. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. There are three people with their hands up, Chris Doyle, Steve Evans, and Ellen Schreiber.
Ms. Doyle?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Chris Doyle, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. I would just want to make one comment and a reference for people who are interested in this topic. I, if you haven't read the Warrant Committee report, I would refer you to around page 63 for some detail, if you're interested in detail about this topic. I heard someone ask for that. And then I just want to express my sincere disappointment in the amount we're putting in here. It's short-sighted. And also, there's opportunity cost, of course, because money we don't put in is money that's not invested and growing, which is an important aspect of how this is going to get funded, is investment returns as well. So that's a cost. And I would actually suggest that the Select Board and the Treasurer consider revising the policy to have a higher minimum, to have not $50,000, but some higher number that, you know, could be the subject of a discussion. But $50,000 is too low of a floor, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Steve Evans?
Sure. Okay, Steve Evans, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. Just a question, if my memory is correct, and you can correct me if it's not. I think when we were funding this at the higher level, one of the arguments in favor of keeping that higher level was that it supported our favorable bond rating. And I'm wondering if now that we're funding it at a much lower level, if, if there is a potential negative impact on the bond rating?
Floyd, I think you're best to answer that.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. The S and Ps and Moody's of the world love the idea that we are consistently funding. They clearly understand that the last year or two, there's been some bumps in the road because of COVID-19 and how towns have had to operate. I think there could be a negative impact if come next year, next year being fiscal year 23. We were funding this at the same level of $50,000. They might look at this a little bit different from a bond rating perspective. But as long as we have consistently funded it, funded it, and everyone understands, especially the rating agencies, the last couple of fiscal years, we've had some bumps in the road. We're not the only community that's had those COVID-19 bumps in the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Mr. Evans, did you have a follow-up? Or was that sufficient?
No.
Okay.
Steve Evans, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. No, I did not.
Great, thank you. So no hands that I see, so we'll go to a vote on the motion under Article 20. The OPEB vote, polls are open. If you support this motion, vote yes. Oppose, vote no. Few more seconds. All right, let's close the polls. Ellen, do you have a couple more?
I do. Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the Town Clerk. On Article 20, the OPEB, Pat Bruce, Precinct 2, votes yes. Dawn Mercy, Precinct 8, votes yes.
So the top final total is 253 in favor, one opposed, and three abstentions. So thank you. We now turn to Article 21. Mr. Dash?
Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member. A large move that Article 21 be dismissed. I would note for town meetings' benefit that this, the purpose of this general stabilization fund would have been to hold funds from a successful override for future years to spread the override funds out over those years. But since the override failed, there is no need for such a fund.
So I would accept unanimous consent to dismiss this article. If anyone objects, please raise your hand. I don't see any objection. So the motion under Article 21 is passed unanimously. We now turn to Article 22, the budget. I'm going to have Ms. Slapp read the motion. And then I will explain, as I did under Articles 13, 14, and 18, how we are proposing with your agreement to consolidate the voting, not the discussion. So Ms. Slapp, to read the motion? Can you say it already?
Yes. Laurie Slapp, Precinct 6, Town Meeting Member, Chair of the Warrant Committee. Article 22, move that the following amounts be appropriated for the fiscal year 2022 operating budget and be raised in the tax levy or from the general revenues from the town. A, general government, $4,852,193. B, employee benefits, retirement expenses, $9,662,058. C, employee benefits, other reserves, including health insurance, insurance and salary reserve, $6,687,28. D, public safety, $13,343,467. F, vocational education, $1,764,269. G, public services, $14,453,829. H, human services, $3,284,574. And I, principal debt and interest, $14,723,230. And that the town transfer the following sums to meet in part appropriations for capital expenditures and for fiscal year 2022 operating budgets made at this town meeting. From fund balance and abatement and exemption surplus account, $235,000. From Belmont Municipal Light Department, pilot payment, $150,000. From unreserved fund balance, free cash, $7,113,925. From parking meters receipts, $30,000. From rock, water revenue for indirect cost, $519,000. From sewer revenue for indirect cost, $519,000. From capital endowment fund for various capital expenditures, $125,000. From capital projects funds for various capital expenditures, $260,000. From perpetual care fund interest transfer out account, $27,193.
Thank you, Laurie. And the Warrant Committee vote?
The Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Adam Dash, the Select Board?
Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member, Lars. The Select Board unanimously recommends favorable action.
Great, thank you. Let me explain what we're doing here, and then I will turn it back to Ms. Slapp for the presentation on the budget. What we're simply doing is combining all of the items with one exception, public schools. So this is the total budget minus public schools. We will dispense with this motion under Article 22, and then we will proceed to a separate motion under public schools. But if you go back one, two slides, Glenn. So in the past, you'll see these are eight separate parts of the budget. And in the past, we have often voted each individually. So we'll have a vote on general government and go through that, take that time, so forth. So that's eight votes, and then the transfers are a ninth vote. So rather than having nine separate votes, we're proposing to have one vote on after full discussion. So after Ms. Slapp makes her presentation, I will then ask for a unanimous consent to consider all of these items together. There will be a full discussion on any one of these items. So we're not constricting the discussion in any way. It's just when we are complete, have completed all questions and discussion, the proposal with your agreement will be to have one vote for these nine items rather than nine separate votes, thereby saving considerable time. With that, I'll turn to Ms. Slapp for the presentation. And I will say to Ms. Slapp and the Warrant Committee, you do heroic work. This is a particularly difficult year, and I want to thank you for everything you do, Ms. Slapp.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Laurie Slapp, Precinct 6, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the Warrant Committee. Next slide, please. What we wanted to do tonight, quite briefly, is just to give you an overview of the FY22 budget. I would like to say I hope you had a chance to read the full Warrant Committee report. We do try to give as much detail on each department budget as possible. But what I'd like to go over tonight is just to give you a brief sense of the background, an overview of the revenue and expenditures, give you an update on free cash and other fund balances, say a few words about the American Rescue Plan, the funds that Belmont expects to receive from the federal government, and then, of course, look ahead beyond FY22. Next slide, please. Here, I just want to go over very briefly the budget process, especially for the benefit of new town meeting members. Town and school departments draft budgets that they put before the various committees. As the moderator mentioned, this year was particularly challenging because there were two sets of budgets put together with and without an override. Of course, the budget we have in front of us tonight reflects the override defeat from the vote in April. I also want to mention that this budget does not include any COVID-related expenditures because those are expected to be reimbursed by the federal government, so those are held out separately. After the departments have prepared the budgets, they are reviewed by the Select Board, the School Committee, and the Warrant Committee. As we know, the Capital Budget Committee also makes its recommendation. We get reports sent to all town meeting members. And then final authority to approve the FY22 budget lies with this body, with town meeting. And next slide, please. Just to give you a little bit of background about this FY22 budget, I do want to point out that, as we all know, after the COVID year, there were several significant cuts made to the FY21 budget as spending was frozen. We didn't really know what the outlook was going to be. So the town very wisely, I think, took a very conservative approach. So $1.8 million in the roads budget, for example. .56 million from discretionary capital budget was cut. In addition, there were out-of-district special education tuition funds that came from grant money instead of from the general fund. And those were explicitly recognized at the time that this would only be able to be continued for one year. So they have been returned to the FY22 budget. The Warrant Committee would like to point out that there is a significant reliance on free cash The Warrant Committee would like to point out that there is a significant reliance on free cash in the FY22 budget, which is concerning. It's not sustainable over the long run, so we want to bring that to your attention. And I would also like to mention that we did not, there are no American Rescue Plan funds from the federal government included in this budget. They will be considered separately. Next slide, please. I think it's always important to give an overview as to what, where the revenues come from. Here you can see about 79% comes from property taxes, 9% from state aid, and 6% each from local receipts and free cash and other. The next slide, please. It's always important to look at FY22 in comparison to the prior year. So here you'll see that overall, the total general fund budget increases by 7%. The town operating budget is up by 4.3%. The schools by 7.7%. Again, this refers only to the general fund, so I will say a few words about this in a moment. The capital budget is up 85%. Again, this is because that discretionary money has been restored in FY22, and fixed costs are up 6.8%. Again, this is largely driven by the return of the roads budget. Next slide, please. Here you can see, I wanted to make sure everyone could see the total Belmont Public School budget from all sources, the general fund plus the grants and revolving accounts. Because even though the general fund is going up 7.7%, you'll see there's a significant decrease of close to 30% in the grants and revolving accounts. So the overall, from all sources, the school budget is only going up 2.5%, which is very different than that 7.7% I showed in the slide just a moment before. And this again is because this year, for example, the out-of-district tuition funds are coming from the general fund. They're not being, coming from the grants and revolving accounts. I was explained in the Warrant Committee report, there's another anomaly in that the kindergarten, there are no longer any full-day kindergarten fees being charged. So instead of coming from, excuse me, revolving accounts for the full-time kindergarten expenses, those are coming from the general fund. This decision was made expecting that that would be offset by an increase in state aid that in fact didn't come through in FY22, but there is expected that that will materialize in the years ahead. And also, the School Committee and School Department decided to draw down revolving accounts as much as possible to preserve services for students in light of the failed override. So again, that shows how the grants and revolving accounts have declined for the FY22 budget. But again, overall, 2.5% is the increase for the schools. Next slide, please. I think it's also important for the town meeting just to see the detail of fixed costs. Here you can see that the lion's share comes from pension expensive, excuse me, from pension expense, which is slightly higher in '22. Debt and interest largely driven by the Belmont Middle and High School project is slightly lower in '22. And then you have a series of smaller accounts around the $2 million range. And here, the one you can see fourth from the left, the Capitol Roads and Sidewalk, shows how that again has been restored as 1.8 million is back in the roads budget. Next slide, please. This again is a nice to show a visual of what the pie chart looks like. This is divided up by the different articles, A, B, and C, and so forth. You can see that 47% roughly of the expenditures are for the schools, it's shown in the light blue here. Public services is the dark blue, is about 10%. This includes community development, facilities, recreation, and public works. Debt and interest in the brown sliver is about 10%. Again, this is largely the high school project. And public safety is the other large one, about 9%, which is shown in yellow. Next slide, please. Again, I think it's important for town meeting to get an update on free cash. This is discussed in much more detail in the full Warrant Committee report. But for largely driven because of COVID, when there was spending freezes put in place at the onset of the pandemic and a overall reduction in activity, their free cash that was certified by the state last fall is much higher than normal. It came in at $11.24 million. As I mentioned, there's a concerning reliance on free cash that's being a part of the operating budget this year at 7.11 million. We just discussed the OPEB contribution, which is relatively small this year, .05 billion. Again, that was a cause of concern among the Warrant Committee members. So that would leave after this appropriation, 4.08 million in free cash. As many of you know, there is a free cash guideline that was developed by the Warrant Committee and Select Board in years past that recommends a free cash balance of between 3% and 5% of general fund revenues. And 4.08, we are just below that recommended guideline. If you go to the next slide, you can also see, as the treasurer likes to remind us, it's important to look at the fund balances in total and not just the free cash balance. So here's a list that shows the general stabilization fund is just under 1.9 million as of last June 30. This requires a 2/3ers vote of town meeting to be an appropriation from this fund. The OPEB trust, the value as of April 30 was just over $6 million was the market value. The capital endowment fund stands about 4.9 million. This was again as of the end of April. And this is, as I read just a few moments ago, the current annual payment is $125,000 from this capital endowment fund. And last is the Kendall School Fire Fund, which stands just over $2 million as of last June. And this fund is used for major capital project design and studies. Next slide, please. I wanted to say a few words about the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. As you have probably heard before, Belmont expects to receive about $7.6 billion for the coronavirus local stability fund. There will also be $1 million coming to the schools. It's called S R 3. We are still awaiting guidance, or certainly as of last Friday, I didn't get any updates today, is exactly when there will be more precise details about this. But if you go to the next slide, please. As I said, there, we know there will be $1 million coming to the schools. 80% will be for general school support and 20% for learning loss. It is also expected that up to $7.6 million will come to the town, to Belmont overall. And the main uses will be to support public health expenditures for funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts. And also, there is a bucket for replacing lost public sector revenue. Again, there are more details coming as to exactly how that calculation, how we can calculate what is that lost public sector revenue, and exactly what uses it can be made. But if you turn to the next slide, please. We expect the federal funding will come across two years. The funding was first tranche was to be in June of 2021. I realize we're already almost halfway through June, but we'll see what comes in the next few weeks, and then the second half would come in June of next year. So I put in red here at the bottom that the Warrant Committee always has to put in this rejoinder that is, federal funding is one-time in nature. So we would highly recommend that it not be used for new recurring expenses, but there are plenty of one-time expenses where it will be very useful. And town leaders will certainly be putting forth every penny that we can to take advantage of this federal funds. Next slide, please. And I wanted just to end here with what the challenges that the Warrant Committee sees for FY22 and beyond. As we heard from the beginning of this meeting from Travis Frank, the structural deficit is of concern. There is a lot of attention paid to see how we can increase revenues, decrease costs, or improve delivery of services. But in basically Proposition 2.5, plus the new growth, budget increases are in the range of 2.5% to 3.5% without additional revenue sources. So this year, as mentioned, 7.11 million of free cash is being deployed for the FY22 budget. FY23 will also rely heavily on one-term funds, but this is really not sustainable at all over the long term. We would also draw attention, as this has come up in many years past, the compensation costs are really primary drivers of the Belmont's budgets. All union contracts are currently in negotiation, so these are extraordinarily important in determining the trajectory for the town. We certainly have heard a lot in this town meeting about the capital needs that are extensive and acute that we all must prepare for in the years ahead. And finally, just want to mention that I think communication is another theme we've heard throughout this town meeting and throughout the past year, that we really want to do all we can to improve the information that we share with town meeting and with Belmont's residents. So in that spirit, I would encourage anyone who has any suggestions for the Warrant Committee to go to the Warrant Committee webpage. There's a link you can click to share any creative ideas you have, whether it be for how to better communicate with town meeting members or ideas as to how we can improve our work. Because the Warrant Committee is really here to advise town meeting on all things financial. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Slapp. At this moment, if you could do the next slide, Glenn. So this is the moment I explained a few moments ago that I just would like to get unanimous consent from town meeting to vote all of the items together as one vote rather than nine separate votes. Mr. Sullivan, did you have a?
I had actually two questions. I'm sorry, Jim Sullivan, Precinct 2.
Did you have the questions on the budget or on the unanimous consent?
On the budget.
Okay, let me hold on that then. I'll get right back to you. Ellen Triber, were you on the unanimous consent?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Ellen Triber, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Mike, I'm wondering why we are making this decision before the discussion? Because it could very well be that during the discussion, we might decide we would prefer to vote them independently. So it seems like if we make this decision now and then we discuss, we can't adapt to, based on this decision.
I'm happy to do that. That's fine, because either way, we're going to discuss all nine elements together. Catherine Bowen, did you have a comment on unanimous consent?
Catherine Bowen, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member. I had a similar question to Ms. Triber, which was how one would, you know, vote if they were concerned with any one amendment, how they would be addressed within that or with any one budget line there.
Sure. So we'll, I'll, we'll have the discussion, and then we'll come to unanimous consent. Judy Sengler, did you have any further question on this?
Okay.
Yes, I do. Judy Sengler, Precinct 6. I wonder if this precludes any funding if, if we vote to reconsider Article 16. There was funding included in that, in that article. So if we vote this funding in, and then Article 16 is reconsidered, what happens?
I don't believe there's any conflict there, but Patrice Garvin, did you have a?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. These are, the money that we are requesting for Article 16 is not part of the operating budget. It's a separate funding source.
Right. So that's all comments on, on the unanimous consent. So we will go to a discussion of the motion. Let's put up the main motion. Glenn, under Article 22, let's go to the front part of it, Glenn. Yeah, this is the key part. So we're going to open to discussion on the budget, which is everything but the schools. And then when we complete discussion, we'll consider unanimous consent. So Ellen?
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the town clerk. At this time, there are two people with their hands up, Jim Sullivan and Ji Yun Wong.
Great, thank you. Jim, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Jim Sullivan, Precinct 2, I have two questions. One is somewhat in the detail. In the presentation, there was an identification of the Belmont Electric Pilot contribution to the town of $150,000. Previous to this, their contributions have been either $650,000 or $500,000. Is there an explanation of why there was a reduction in the pilot payment from Belmont Light?
Ms. Garvin?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. I'm going to ask Select Board Member Roy Epstein to answer this question.
Of course, Mr. Epstein.
Roy Epstein, Vice Chair of the Select Board, member of the Light Board, and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. The, I just, you know, just because there's a couple of issues here, could we state the question just to make sure I'm answering the question that you asked?
Mr. Sullivan.
Jim Sullivan, Precinct 2. In one of the detailed presentations, the pilot contribution from the Belmont Light was stated at $150,000. Previously, in prior years, as far as I know, it was either $650,000 or $500,000 in pilot payments. And the question was, is there a reason for why the pilot payments were reduced?
Yes, because the, by agreement with, between the town and the Light Department, Belmont Light accelerated the pilot payment that it ordinarily makes in December. And what happened was that a portion of the payment that ordinarily would be made in December actually was made or will be made this month in June, leaving only $150,000 remaining that will be paid in December. And that's, that's what appears in the fiscal '22 budget.
Sullivan, did you have a second question?
I did have a second question. That was on vocational education line item. The first, a series of questions here, they may be taken by one person. One confirmed that the vocational education is separate from the public, Belmont Public School budget. And two, why was that done and when? And three, who is responsible then for, if it is not the public, public school system, who is responsible for vocational education?
Who would like to handle that?
I can answer that.
Ms. Garvin?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. So the vocational ed budget has, since I have been here, separate from the school budget. It is not part of the school budget. And then who is responsible for the assessment? When the assessment comes in for the middle sex region vocational ed, we are responsible on the town side for that assessment as well as other vocational ed students.
Mr. Sullivan, historically, I can add one, answer one more piece. Historically, that line item was from the Minuteman School when that, and when we were members of Minuteman.
Jim Sullivan, Precinct 2. Just to reiterate, I sat on the board that recommended that we stay in Minuteman, so I'm a little bit sensitive to this. At that time, when we went through that board, this was a line item, as far as I understood, that was controlled by the school department.
I believe that, sorry, Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. The, the, the Minuteman vocational comes through as an assessment. That's, that's a, the town receives and we pay that outside of the school budget. The additional vocational ed students, that money also comes out of that line. But some of the logistics in regards to those students does involve the school department.
Thank you.
Sullivan, Precinct 2. I don't find that an answer, but that's beside the point. Thank you.
This is Laurie Slapp, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, yes, please, Laurie.
I just wanted to say, I think some of this, as we've said, is, is the legacy from when Belmont belonged to the Minuteman District. And I would expect there might be some discussion whether this might change in the years ahead, but it really is coming from that, coming from that legacy.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. There are four people with their hands up at this point. Ji and Travis Frank and Jack Weiss are the first three.
Thank you. Ji Yun Wong, please.
Yes, hello. Ji Yun Wong, Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member. My comment is for the DPW and Mr. Jay Marcot. And it's in light of the fact that we spent over $200,000 for three vehicles this year for them, as well as how the town has shown overwhelming support for being environmentally responsible. For long periods of time, I've seen that many of the town vehicles, especially the DPW vehicles, to be standing idling. And I don't really see why they're idling during those times. And there is a program called Safe Routes to School that has chapters in various of the various schools, including Belmont, of which I participated in. of which I participated in and chaired in. And a couple of years ago, many of the members got together and spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out how to message the importance of not idling. So I wanted to just give a couple of points that we came up with. An idling vehicle emits 20 times more pollution than one traveling at 30 miles per hour. One minute of idling produces the same amount of carbon monoxide as three packs of cigarettes. Toxins and idling emissions include benzene, carbon monoxide, VOC, and particulate matter.
Ji, excuse me, Ji, excuse me, I think we're moving a bit of far field from a budget discussion. If you have a particular question.
It's more of a comment, thank you. It's more of a comment that I see these cars idling, that the one, one of the points is that idling for just 10 seconds or longer uses more fuel and puts more wear and tear on your vehicle than turning off and restarting your engine does. And so we're spending all this money on these, on these vehicles that I know are important. And yet they're sitting idling for periods of time, wearing and tearing. And also, we're trying to be greener. But even more than that, you know, this behavior causes the unhealthy environment, just right in the environment, because around us, because it's not going to just fly in the air out into nowhere, but it's constantly around us. And so I'm really asking the DPW to adopt some type of policy in which they won't be idling their cars if it's not necessary. Because, you know, this is something that we are all trying to do to improve our environment immediate as well as further out. And also, you know, we talked about whether it could be electric cars, but I know that the whole fleet can't be replaced in a quick manner. So first step would be just asking you to stop idling if possible and then slowly start replacing with the electric cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ji. Travis Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Travis Frank, precinct five. I guess I have a big picture question on the budget, which is, what worries me about seeing the overview of the budget, and, and thank you, Ms. Slapp, for such a good presentation, is the use of free cash and such a heavy reliance on, on free cash and one-time expenses. I know as a, you know, family household budget, if one person were to lose their job, we would drastically cut costs and we would take a deeper cut. In particular, we wouldn't necessarily rely on all of our savings or the cushion that we built up, because we don't know what next year holds. And I voted for the override. So I'm, of course, you know, with the idea that I would like my town services to improve and, and increase. And yet, the town did not vote for the override. So I guess I'm wondering what the rationale is, is to stay below the recommended limit on free cash, to use so much free cash and to not actually make deeper cuts. I don't want to see the cuts. I voted for the override. And yet, I don't understand the rationale behind the budget. And I'll have a similar question probably related to the school budget and Mr. Phelan's email of about a month ago. But my question here is, I guess regarding to this, which is, why not deeper cuts? Why so much reliance on free cash? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Slapp, do you want to start?
Sure, I'll begin. I think it's, it's a very important question and one that was trying to, to keep the balance. I think the, the thought was that if there was a lot of free cash remaining and the cuts were so painful, that, that would be sort of the opposite end of the spectrum from what you're describing. I think that, so the, if you will, it's, it could be thought of as more of a gradual process. I think that this year, we can get by with the budget that's presented. We'll see where free cash comes in in the fall. There's also the looming use of some of the, the federal money that we know is coming. Again, the Warrant Committee stresses very strongly that this cannot be built into the budget for the long term, but there is, you know, millions of dollars that will be able to be used in the next couple of years. So I guess we sort of saw it as a more gradual process. But I share your concerns and certainly it's something that is not sustainable. There has to be another override or there's going to be no choice but to have some very severe cuts ahead.
Ellen?
Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this point, there are seven people with their hands in the air. Jack Weiss, Joe Bernard, and Marie Warner are the next three.
Jack Weiss.
Jack Weiss, precinct one. I actually don't have a question. I, I wanted to just comment on Mr. Sullivan's questions about vocational education as a member of the Ed Subcommittee of the Warrant Committee, as well as a former member of the, formerly Belmont's representative on the Minuteman School Committee for six years. The Minuteman budget, when Belmont was a member of Minuteman, was an allocation of costs that was set based on historic enrollment. And Minuteman set their budget in January, so that by the time we voted our budget, the Minuteman assessment was fixed and known for the upcoming year. I think it's that historic accident, that historic accident circumstance, which is why we've called the Minuteman assessment a fixed cost. We had no choice about it because we were a member of the district and it was known with certainty for the year ahead by the time our budget was presented. As Laurie mentioned, now that we are no longer a member, the assessment or our vocational education expenses for the year ahead is a function of next year's enrollment in Minuteman and other voc ed schools times whatever assessment those schools are charging. So this is now a projection as to what those expenses are going to be. It is no longer a fixed cost. The school department is the one who oversees, provides guidance, counseling, handles the logistics of having Belmont students who want to have a vocational education get aligned with Minuteman or other programs. And they oversee transportation and the like. The bills get paid through them. But it is a historic artifact from Belmont's previous position as a member of Minuteman, that it is stripped out of the school department budget, hopefully.
Thank you, Jack. Joe Bernard?
Joe Bernard, Town Meeting Member, precinct three. I want to ask about line item H, Human Services, specifically about the social worker for the Council on Aging. I remember at our first meeting this month, select board member Mr. Epstein suggested that we shouldn't adopt provisions of the Brave Act because the money would serve more people if it was used to hire a social worker for the Council on Aging. So I disagreed with that premise at the time that we should fund additional headcount by underpaying existing employees. But I agreed with him that this is an important position for the town and, and really have no objection to funding additional headcount by reducing existing headcount. The Warrant Committee report simply stated that the position was not funded due to the unsuccessful override vote. So my question now is whether there was any discussion about reducing headcount in another department to fund a social worker or whether the position can be funded using American Rescue Plan money or whether we're just saying for the record that this position will only be funded following a successful override.
Patrice Garvin?
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrice Garvin, Town Administrator. So the social worker position was a position that was eliminated due to the failed override. It was proposed to be funded with the additional revenue that we would, would have received from override being successful. There are discussions in regards to the federal aid money in regards to one-time expenses, as Ms. Slapp indicated in her presentation. If we are going to look at a potential social worker for the senior center, it would be for a period of time. It wouldn't be for recurring expense due to the fact that the federal aid dollars that we would receive would be one-time money. So we did not look at reducing another position to support the social worker due to the fact that all the positions that we had proposed that were new positions would have to be funded through the revenue that we received through a successful override.
Okay, then it's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marie Warner, Town Meeting Member, precinct six. My question is regarding the line item I, the largest item on this budget, principal debt and interest. Can you tell us what the interest rates are for this various debt and whether any effort can be made to do some refinancing under the currently favorable lower rates?
Floyd Carmen, I think you're best to handle that.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. The interest rate for our last couple of major borrowings have been somewhere around 2%. These are government obligation bonds, so it's not like a mortgage that we can call up our local bank and all of a sudden decide to refinance. There is a schedule that is laid out. So as an example, a two-borrowing for the high school, the earliest we could probably refinance for any one of them is over the next 10 to 12 years from now.
Thank you for that. And I don't see it particularly called out here, but I understand there's interest also on the unfunded retirement liability. That interest, is that still apply? Is that, that sinking fund interest, could that be refinanced as well?
Mr. Carmen?
Mr. Moderator, I, I didn't really quite understand that question.
Ms. Warner, do you want to identify yourself and repeat the question, please?
Marie Warner, Town Meeting Member, precinct six. As I look at the payments for unfunded pension liability, there is the amount itself, plus there appears to be a sinking fund payment that's made annually as well. Is that possible to also refinance or is it also restricted?
Mr. Carmen?
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. That decision would be made by the Belmont Retirement Board and not the town.
Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Doyle?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Chris Doyle, precinct one. I just, I had a few comments on, that are substantive comments and a couple of process points. One away from my own comments, just in response to the prior questioner, I would just note that the pension debt is not in the form of a, a bond or a bond instrument the way that the other debt Floyd was referring to. So it's not like one can just refinance it. So it's an obligation to the pension system, but it's not a, a debt instrument that can just be refinanced in the market. A couple of comments substance-wise. One is, I'm disappointed in this budget that none of the money from the federal money is being used for capital purposes. And I mentioned this at the Warrant Committee as well. That money is permitted to be used for capital purposes, in particular for water and sewer. And of course, the use of the money that way doesn't relieve the operating budget in any way, but it is one-time money and I feel like it would be a wise thing to do to at least use some of that money the way that, one of the, I believe, four choices for, for buckets that were, that are allowed, which is water and sewer capital. And that would, of course, have, both of those enterprise funds have large capital plans and it would help with those. And it would also reduce their reliance on one-time funds in our operating budget, which is that, in my view, is at a really unwise, excuse me, unwise level. I, I voted for the override. I think that we need an override. But I think by using one-time funds, to the extent that we are, it masks the problem that we have and in fact exacerbates it. So that's one point. The second thing is I felt like we should not have gone, have the free cash go below the minimum policy level. If we have the policy level on something like free cash, we should regard that as a floor and, and not go below it. So I'm, I'm disappointed that we're doing that. And then just two kind of process points budget-wise that are just kind of things that I hope will happen in the future. One is that the, the Financial Task Force did tons of really terrific work on long-term projections. It was really a valuable service. They had a lot of, that committee had a lot of input from both volunteers and from hard-working town employees. And I would hope that the ownership of the projection and its use would become incorporated on a year-to-year basis. And there wouldn't be a, maybe we need a task force at some point in the future for something else, but that function really should be, I think, initiated by the town. There is the capacity from an expertise point of view in the town to, to do that. We have a lot of good expertise. And so I would suggest that that should be incorporated into town responsibilities. And as part of the budget, there should be a long-term forecast that's project, that's presented with the budget. And then the other kind of process point I have is just on the budget format. And I've been an advocate for a while on the Warrant Committee for having an outcomes-based budget, a budget that provides some goals and measured outcomes for each of the operating departments. This is hard work to do, and so I'm not saying it's easy to do. But I do think that we could, for example, tackle it by doing one or two departments a year. There are a lot of examples of other communities that do this. It provides a much more robust way of communicating budget information to the community because all of, all, you know, citizens and residents understand more about what their dollars are going for as opposed to just line items, which tend to not have very much meaning. So I would suggest that we move toward that. I, and, and select one or two or three departments for the FY '23 budget where that is going to be implemented. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Chris. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the town clerk. At this time, there are six people with their hands raised. Laurie Slapp, Thomasina Olsen, and Bob McGaw are the first three.
Laurie?
Laurie Slapp, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that Chris raised. Thank you very much for the comments. In regards to the American Rescue Plan, I believe those plans and uses for the dollars are still under consideration as we get more details, as I said, over the coming weeks. I believe the plan is to work with the various departments, with the select board of the school committee, and also there will be a chance for the community to weigh in to help figure out how best to deploy those funds. So I think Chris raises an important point, but I just wanted to let people know that that has not been fully decided yet. And the same thing for the Financial Task Force. I believe they're making recommendations as to where that model should live. So that is another thing that should just say, stay tuned. I agree with Chris in her points, but I just wanted to make that clear as well, that that, the evolution of where that goes will be, should be decided in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. Tommy Olsen?
Thomasina Olsen, precinct five, Town Meeting Member. First of all, I want to thank Chris Doyle for making that suggestion. I think, I think some change in, in the way the budgets are, are looked at. And in, it has been troubling me going through this whole thing. I want to go back to vocational education. I, at one point, was a school business administrator. So I'm very, I, I'm very clear on what goes into a school budget. And vocational education was always in the school budget. Now, I understand there's been some moving around, but I'm hopeful that maybe something like Ms. Doyle is recommending will help us have a better sense of what's going on in our budgets. And, and as I said, I know it was always, so to see it here is really confusing. And I had a prior question about, about revolving funds, funds about, from the Recreation Department, which Mr. Marshall adequately answered. But again, I'm kind of getting the feeling that I don't know where the line items really. I don't know where the line items really reside. So it's just a comment. So I'm hopeful that we will consider Ms. Doyle's, adopting Ms. Doyle's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Bob McGaw.
Unmute. Robert McGaw, Precinct One, Town Meeting Member. For the past year, we have seen way too many instances where interactions between persons of color and police have gotten out of hand. We've all held our breath, hoping it would not happen in Belmont, and we can all take pride in the fact that Chief McIsaac and our Belmont Police have been very, very good at addressing those issues. I would want you, Mr. Moderator, to invite Chief McIsaac to explain how this budget will enable him to continue the training and other efforts he has made to ensure that the Belmont Police are well-positioned to deal proactively.
Thank you. Chief McIsaac.
Hi, Chief James McIsaac, your Belmont Police Chief. Yes, this budget, we've been fortunate in Belmont that we've always had a robust training budget, and we're going to continue that with this budget. There is some, there's going to be, we anticipate additional training along with the Police Reform Bill that was passed this year. And we will continue to train our offices and the best way to deal with diverse populations, de-escalation. Our school resource officers are going to receive additional de-escalation training this year and working with children. And one of the things we just purchased with some funds that we had in our firearms budget is a device called wrap technology. It's called Bolo Wrap. Maybe you've seen it. It shoots a rope and string that wraps around people's legs or around their arms. It's another less than lethal option to provide our offices with all the tools that they can need, that they need to de-escalate situations safely. So yes, we plan, that's our main focus. It always has been. It's to treat everybody in the, in the town and all the citizens that we interact with in Belmont, visitors to Belmont, to treat them fairly and with respect, and have equitable outcomes in terms of our enforcement.
Thank you, Chief. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the Town Clerk. At this time, there are five people with their hands in the air. And they're Bob McLaughlin, Daniel Barry, and Steve Evans.
Thank you. Bob McLaughlin.
Yeah, Bob McLaughlin, Precinct Two, Member of the Warrant Committee. And Laurie has already alluded to what my question is. We're about to receive $7.6 million. I don't think the federal government quite understood the function of the New England Town Meeting. We are not, we, the Town Meeting Members, not having anything to say as to how that gets allocated. And I guess my question is, who does have that say? And we're being preempted in our usual appropriating authority, so that, and Laurie has indicated it's still a work in progress. But all I say is, let's all keep our eye on who makes that decision and how do they do it? So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to ask our Town Council, George Hall, to respond to that question.
George Hall, Town Council. Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, yes.
So there is an exception to the general rule that all revenue received by the town goes into the general fund for appropriation by the Town Meeting for grants from federal and state government. So a grant that is received from the federal government or the state government can be put into a separate account under Chapter 44, Section 53A, and expended with the approval of the Board of Selectmen by whatever board or officer is the recipient of the grant. I think in this case, the Board of Selectmen would also be the recipient. So I think it is the Board of Selectmen that would spend non-school-related funds. And I believe the School Committee would have similar power with respect to funds earmarked for education purposes.
Thank you. Dan Barry? Are you there, Dan?
I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Dan Barry from Precinct One. And I've listened with fascination everything that's been said. Obviously, we're in grim times financially. It seems to me that if you want to avoid the unpleasant choice of either passing substantial overrides every few years, squeezing the compensation of the people who teach our kids and keep us safe to the point where they may go work someplace else, or cutting vital services, we have to make every effort to increase commercial property tax revenue, which is a topic that we've heard about before, though not a lot tonight. With this in mind, I'd like to suggest that our town leaders give some thought to whether mass general law, Chapter 61B, which many of you have probably never heard of before, but which gives a 75% property tax break on the land component of private country clubs is something Belmont should continue to accept without question. I encourage our leaders to consider, one, asking our state legislative delegation to eliminate the law, two, asking the private golf course we have in town to not seek the break, tax break going forward. And three, and this is the commercial property tax aspect, if neither of those actions works out, I'd like to see the town consider working with a developer to take the property by eminent domain, as permitted by a 2005 Supreme Court decision, without any cost to the town, since the developer would cover the expensive acquisition at fair market value, and then putting something in there that will generate millions in commercial property tax revenue in the years to come. On this point, I know this is going to be seen as a crazy idea, but please consider, if we were designing Belmont from scratch today, would we really take a parcel of land that's big enough to contain an 18-hole golf course? And that is just off Route Two, and make it a private country club? Please also consider for a moment the tremendous interest that would, that would exist in this property that is less than eight miles from the State House. We could dictate the development that occurs there. We could put something in there that is better for the environment than an incredibly high-water-consuming pesticide-dependent golf course that includes enough affordable housing, if we want, to get us to the 10% affordable housing threshold we need to reach to be able to say no to developments like Beatrice Circle that we don't want, all while raising lots of new revenue and hopefully increasing our race diversity. And finally, about a week ago, many Town Meeting Members expressed sincere concern that I appreciated that giving a property tax break exemption to Gold Star parents would amount to a subsidy that the remaining Belmont taxpayers would have to bear. Right now, please consider that in Belmont and throughout the state, a much bigger subsidy is being given, not to Gold Star parents who've lost a child in service to this country, but to the members of private country clubs. I think that embedded in this problem is an opportunity, and I urge our leaders to embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve Evans.
Yeah, Steve Evans, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I wanted to go back to the vocational education line item. And I know in past town meetings, we spent many, many hours debating withdrawal from Minuteman, and there was a lot of big effort to make that happen. So now that we're one year out of that, I'm just wondering, are we seeing, I guess I have two questions. Is there any information that we have that shows that we're actually saving money by being a non-member of Minuteman? I know from the Warrant Committee report, I think there's 45 students that are now, that were previously paying the member rate. Now we'll be paying the non-member rate. But when I look at the line item there, it doesn't, it looks like we're paying pretty much the same as we were before. And then just another quick question. Have any Belmont students been denied admission to Minuteman because it was full?
Who is best equipped to answer Steve's questions?
Laurie Slapp, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I would suggest perhaps Jack Weiss, who's on the Education Subcommittee of the Warrant Committee, or the Superintendent might be best equipped.
Jack, would you like to, or?
I can, excuse me, Jack Weiss, Precinct One, Member of the Warrant Committee and former Belmont Rep on Minuteman. I can answer in general, I think, to some of it. First off, I think the characterization that withdrawing from Minuteman would lead, would lead to an immediate reduction in the annual assessment. I'm not sure that everyone who voted to withdraw from the district viewed it that way. I think there was a sense that by withdrawing from the district, Belmont would not be saddled with the debt service associated with a larger school that if enrollment declined, would have, or continued to decline, or stayed flat, would have led to even higher costs. So I think part of the decision to leave was the flexibility of switching from a 30-year mortgage, if you will, to a pay-as-you-go depending on enrollment. And enrollment at 45 students is, in vocational education, is at a 20- to 30-year high. I don't think anybody knows. I think people will have different assessments or intuitions as to whether or not those enrollments will stay at that level, increase from that level, or decline to more the norm of about 25 or so. That will only be known down the road. In terms of being denied, the Superintendent may be able to answer.
I think he's here, Jack. He can answer that.
I can say, though, that there are three people who are attending Medford this year, and my belief is that they are, that's because they were unable to get into Minuteman.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Superintendent John?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Failwell, Superintendent of Schools. We do offer support and facilitation for families to go to both Minuteman and Medford Vocational. There have been students that have been denied at Minuteman, and there have been students subsequently who have gone to Medford Vocational. We transport those students to both schools and provide them with access as eighth-grade students and families to the high schools' open houses and work with the families to ensure they have access to vocational education.
Thank you. We're going to hear from, two Select Board members have had their hands up, and then we'll take our usual nine o'clock break. And there are one, two, three, there are four people in line following our break. So with that in mind, Mark Palolo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Palolo, Member of the Select Board, Town Meeting, Precinct Eight. I wanted to talk, speak to Bob McLaughlin's question. Bob, the Financial Task Force Two is looking at the American Rescue Plan funds and how we draw those down, what they can be used for, and we're getting clarity on that. And so it wasn't certainly clear enough for us at this point to present anything to Town Meeting and/or the Select Board of the School Committee. But what we have said is two things. One is certainly any decision on appropriation of those funds or use of those funds would be made by the policy boards, both the school, both Select Board and the School Committee in conjunction with town administration and the school administration. So it's not the Select Board's going to make any, you know, out of decisions, or the Financial Task Force Two, which is not our role to do that. The second point is, it's not entirely clear yet, although it seems to be leaning that way, that there won't be a need for an appropriation. We're just not certain yet. So we're working through that, which may require a fall Town Meeting lot. So we're clearly monitoring that. We hope to, as Laurie said earlier, to draw down every single dollar, to use it in the right way, to use it in one-time, one-time capital expenditures if necessary. But any decisions around where the funds would be used and allocated will be by the Select Board and School Committee. If there's a need for appropriation, clearly, it's them to Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Adam Dash.
Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. I just wanted to also respond to Bob McLaughlin, his comment, to just let him know that the Select Board is, has been discussing with the School Committee, having some, at least at the leadership level, having public forums regarding the use of the funds, once we get, know when we're getting them and how much we're exactly getting, even though we believe that the elected boards will have the opportunity to make the allocations without going to Town Meeting. That doesn't mean that we don't want public input on how the money would be spent. So the intent is to do that. However, the funds are not in the budget that you're voting in Article 22, because Town Meeting cannot allocate funds that we do not have. And at the moment, we do not have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. So, go ahead, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, just before we take the break, and I know you're doing that now, we have three people who are in line, just to give them a perspective. It's Kate Bowen, Roger Colton, and Elizabeth Dionne, in that order.
Great. And I hope that after the three of them, and we're able to come to a vote on the budget and turn to the schools. So we'll see you in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've now returned to discussion of the budget article. So we'll continue to recognize the people of hands are raised. Kate Bowen, you're first.
Thank you, Catherine Bowen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I have two questions related to Article 22, and they are for DPW Director Jay Marquardt and Police Chief James McIsaac in relation to Member Ji Yun-Huang's earlier question. First of all, my understanding is the town does have a vehicle policy and that encompasses all town department vehicles, and it was adopted in 2014. I know Select Board Member Mark Palillo was on the board at the time. And it, you know, largely addresses reductions in admissions and migration of vehicles to more fuel-efficient vehicles. It also underscores regulation, Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 16A, which limits idling of motor vehicles, as well as Regulation 540 CMR 2704, which restricts idling on or near school grounds and daycare centers, including parks, athletic facilities, and playgrounds used for those centers with very limited exceptions. And these regulations and laws address waste, cost, emissions, and air quality. And I would argue safety because a running vehicle is one that can move at any time. So my question for DPW is, and for the Police Department as well, is what are they doing to ensure compliance with the town's vehicle policy as well as the regulations that are underscored in them? And if you could also clarify for Town Meeting, if any reduction in the fuel consumption that's included in the budgets here, if those are realized as a savings, would those funds go towards vehicle maintenance, perhaps aftermarket idling technology, or would they go directly to free cash?
Thank you. Jay Marquardt, do you want to start?
Hi. Good evening, Jay Marquardt, DPW Director. I do realize that we have a anti-idling policy and that it's, you know, probably something that we need to address more routinely with staff. I do know that, you know, some situations during emergency situations, some of our vehicles are, need to be on during the emergency, such as our backer truck and one of our water maintenance trucks needs to be on so it can be, do what it has to do during that emergency. But I have addressed the electric vehicles and prior conversations with Filth Air and Capital that right now, we just can't go to a dealership and purchase a electric pickup truck. They're not, just not available. But looking at admin vehicles in the future would be something that we are definitely be looking at in our next purchase when that is up for replacement. And as far as the realized savings for fuel, Police can answer that question more accurately. We do not, Public Works does not have a electric vehicle within its fleet.
So if I could interject Jay Marquardt before Mr. McIsaac, Police Chief McIsaac speaks.
Just identify yourself, Catherine.
Sure. Catherine Bowen, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member. Just so it's not confused, with respect to the vehicle policy, it doesn't explicitly state that all vehicles would go to electric, but that more fuel-efficient vehicles might also be sought. So, you know, an example of that might be an SUV going to a sedan. So that the idea really is to look more holistically and not simply every vehicle needs to be an electric, but to consider uses for those vehicles and seek the opportunities. And I'll just say, as I looked back at an early report from 2016, you know, about 50 of the 170 vehicles were eligible for, you know, some kind of shift in a more fuel-efficient, potential hybrid, potential electric, but more likely a fuel-efficient. Jay, Marquardt, as you point out, there aren't electric vehicles for some of these uses that you already have. So I just wanted to insert that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Chief McIsaac.
Hi, Chief James McIsaac, and please accept my apologies. I was a little late coming back from the break. Catherine, what was the question?
So in summary, the town has a vehicle policy, a green vehicle policy with respect to more fuel efficiency and also with respect to upholding the idling Mass. General Law, as well as the Regulation 540 CMR 2704. So I was asking what the Police Department and DPW were doing to ensure compliance and support those.
James McIsaac, Police Chief. So four years ago, well, three years ago, the vehicles we purchased, we purchased with idle rights that when the vehicles idling, the engine shuts off and the electric power continues to be fed to the computer, the sirens, the lights, if they're on. The last time we purchased vehicles, we purchased three hybrid vehicles, Ford Interceptor hybrids, that, as you know, essentially when they're not moving, they're basically off. And we've noticed an impact immediately in terms of fuel consumption with the hybrid vehicles. The biggest difference we had was about, for the hybrid, we were spending about 15 cents a gallon, as opposed to about 32 cents on one of our older-model Ford SUVs. So the hybrids, we've seen the impact right away with those three. And moving forward, every vehicle that we purchase, every police vehicle, will be a hybrid. I've had some discussion with residents about electric police vehicles. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. The Tesla has been purchased by a number of departments in turn, but more for an admin vehicle. The Tesla model that you have to buy up here for the all-wheel drive has a glass roof, and that prohibits putting a cage in the vehicle or putting lights on the roof. So while we fully expect in the future to have police fleets, will probably be electric. We're not at that spot right now where we can say that our next vehicle purchase is going to be electric. I think we're ahead of the game. We're ahead of a lot of departments in purchasing the hybrids, and we'll continue to do that.
Great. Thank you. Roger Colton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Colton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I have three questions, and I would like to ask permission to just ask all three questions on the front end and then have those questions parceled out to whomever would best answer them.
Go ahead, Roger.
Okay. And I'm also going to make a comment at the beginning of each question. So you have the thought behind what the question is really asking.
We have a five-minute limit, Roger, so.
No, it's, number one is, we've heard a lot of comments tonight about thinking about the long term. And my question is, can somebody tell us when the existing debt exclusions we have are coming off the books?
So. Let me start there and turn it over to Floyd Carmen. Floyd?
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen. Let me start with the two big ones, $100 million, which probably makes up about 80% of our debt. We got 29 and 30 years left in those. Wellington School, which is another big one, we probably have almost 18, yeah, 18 years left in that one. The rest are small in comparison, but I would say over the next 10, 10 to 12 years, we'll probably have anywhere between 20, 25 million dollars worth of debt roll off the books.
Great. Thank you.
Does it include the Channery?
The who?
The Channery.
Channery rolled off a few years ago.
Oh, okay.
Roger, your second question?
Second question is, my understanding is that one of the big threats to our budget is if our bond rating is, or if the town has a down rating in its bonds. And I also always hear, or we also always hear about how Belmont runs on volunteers, and we may be unique in that respect. Would it help to strengthen our financials if that volunteer time was valued and included in the budget or in our financial statements?
Floyd Carmen.
Mr. Moderator, Floyd Carmen. The rating agencies, the number one question they look at is, does the management of the town know what is going on? Are they proactive? Are they communicating amongst each other? When they go through a ratings call, are they dealing with facts, not trying to spin the information? So rating, so in full disclosure, the ratings call is Floyd Carmen, Tony DeChirillo, the college hero from the School Department, Ms. Garvin, Dan Dogg and the assessor, Glenn Kaster, the town accountant. So all of the financial people are involved in a rating call. It really boils down to how well and clear that they're communicating, and we have a good handle on what we're doing.
Great. Thank you, Floyd. Roger, you had a third question.
Yes. Roger Colton, Precinct 6. Number three is, we heard a lot during the override about the threat to the library if the library's budget was cut too far. Does the current budget that we're being asked to vote on tonight protect our library and protect our membership in the Minuteman system?
Peter, would you like to answer that?
Yes, I would. Peter Strizero, Library Director, Belmont Public Library. So yes, the short answer is yes, our membership is still protected, but we're now within 1% margin of what that number needs to be. The state advises that we have a 2.5% annual budget increase so we can stay at the right clip above what the requirements are. So at the moment, we're not keeping pace with that clip. But at the moment, yes, we are safe. Our membership in the Minuteman Library Network is safe, and credit to the Board of Trustees and Patrice Garvin's team for making sure of that.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the Town Clerk. At this time, there are five people with their hands raised. Elizabeth Dionne, Judy McSwain, Elshad Kazumov, and they're the first three.
Yes, I urge people, please be brief. Elizabeth Dionne.
Elizabeth Dionne, Town Meeting Precinct 2, Member of the Warrant Committee, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Would like to speak to Dan Berry's comments regarding revenue enhancement, with which I agree. In particular, I'd like to point him to page 36 of the Warrant Committee Report, which I drafted as co-chair of the General Government Subcommittee and Chair of the Property Tax Working Group. I won't read all of the relevant information, but if you look at page 36, it talks about what's happened to our revenue from business property, and it's declined from 10% to 5% for a number of reasons. Quote, "We encourage the Select Board to continue their focus on business-friendly policies and for the Planning Board to continue to consider appropriate commercial development. The Select Board may wish to convene a multi constituency committee to consider the future of West Belmont, which contains Belmont's only significant parcels of undeveloped land, including land owned by the Belmont Country Club, which is zoned for single-family residences." Then later on that same page, still page 36, "It may be appropriate for Belmont to consider filing a home rule petition to allow further senior tax relief and B, to coordinate with other municipalities to amend Mass. General Law, Chapter 61B, which currently provides significant property tax exemptions to private golf clubs." Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Judy McSwain. You there, Judy?
Sorry, that was a mistake.
All right. I shout Kazumov.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elshad Kazumov, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I would like to mention that I think that the idea that was brought up earlier by Dan Berry about looking at, sorry, I lost my train of thought, looking at possible use for eminent domain to repurpose the space currently occupied by the Country Club should be worked, should be pursued further, just given how much time we in Town Meeting spend just in this session alone, talking about where to put additional tennis courts. So I have, I also have two quick questions, at least I hope they're quick.
Why don't you ask both of them?
Yes. The first one is to the Library Director. Yes. The first one is to the Library Director. Were there cuts made to the library staff and/or services due to the failure of the override? And the second question is, how much additional revenue would the town need to raise in order to avoid attempting another override within the next three years? Thank you.
Peter, I don't know if you can answer the second. You can answer the first.
Thank you, Mike. Peter Strizero, Library Director, Belmont Public Library. Yes, thanks for the question. There was a sixty-five thousand dollar reduction in, on our ask this year. We tried to be really, really trim in what we asked for, for our budget, but we did get sixty-five thousand dollars less than what we asked for. And it is coming out of a couple of our main buckets. So we are going to have to have reduced hours, probably Sunday hours in FY twenty-two. So there'll be less Sundays where recently we were able to have a seven-day operation every Sunday all year long. The next, we had to reduce, I think, ten thousand dollars or just, just a little more than that in our book budget. So there'll be, there'll be less books, there'll be less copies of new materials, of films, of eBooks, all the things that people request that we're able to buy a certain amount of copies of. There'll be less of that. We also had to take money out of building maintenance. So we spend a good amount of money repairing our, our beloved old outdated Belmont Public Library annually, and we'll have less money for those repairs. So we'll need to just be really prudent in what our choices are. We focus mostly on life safety. So those were the, those were the cuts, about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right. Thank you. Emily Peterson?
Emily Peterson, Precinct One. I move the question.
Emily, I should say there's one person in line.
Okay, if that person wants to go, that's fine. I can remove, I can withdraw that.
All right, Ada Baptista. And then I'll, I'll turn back to you, Emily, if we need to.
I was gonna move the question to you, so.
All right. So we seem to be, seem to be at a decision point here. So we've completed debate on the motion on, under Article Two. Here comes the question unanimous consent. I would strongly urge that we go to one vote. If we have to do nine separate votes, that's probably going to take half an hour. And we need to cover the schools and the reconsideration. If people have had, people have had some disagreements and questions on the budget, those are duly noted in the record. And so it's not as if somebody needs to vote no in order to make their point. So I will ask for unanimous consent on the motion. Great. Thank you all. Let's go to the consent motion. Under Article twenty-two, it's in front of you. Those are the eight categories, and then there are the transfers as well. So we're voting on that motion under Article twenty-two. If you support it, vote yes. If no, vote no. You want to open the polls there, Glenn? Polls are open. All right. I think the polls are closed. Glenn, let's show the tally. So two fifty-two, yes, one opposed, one abstained. Ellen?
Mr. Moderator Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk on Article twenty-two, the Consent Agenda. Pat Bush, Precinct Two, votes yes. Dawn Mercy, Precinct Eight, votes yes.
So if we go to the end, Glenn, final vote, two hundred and fifty-four in favor, one opposed, one abstention. So we now turn to the education article, Belmont Public Schools. Let's turn to the motion. So Amy Chekoway, Chair of the School Committee, will read the motion and make presentation. But I'll get the, after you read the motion, I'll, I'll announce the votes, Amy. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Moved that the following amounts be appropriated for the fiscal year 2022 operating budget and be raised in the tax levy or from general revenues from the town. For the Belmont Public Schools, sixty-six million dollars, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight.
Thank you. And the Warrant Committee, the School Committee, and the Select Board all have voted unanimously in support of this motion. So Amy, would you like to go ahead with the presentation?
Yes, thank you. Again, Amy Chekoway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I'll just say that all day today, occasionally my Zoom has been freezing for about five seconds. I really hope that doesn't happen, but if it does, I should be back within a few seconds and everyone can take a deep breath. I'm pleased to present the FY twenty-two budget of the Belmont Public Schools this evening on behalf of the Belmont School Committee and the School Department. Next slide, please. I'm going to start with a few brief comments on the 2020, 2021 school year. I will not take very much time, but given the extraordinary school year that we've had, I, I wanted to provide a little bit of update for the community. As a school committee member, as a parent of a fifth grader and eighth grader, and as a professional who works in the worlds of education and childcare, I can say with certainty that the past fifteen months has been incredibly challenging and unpredictable. The pandemic has reminded us not only how critical schools are, but also how ingrained they are in the fabric of our community and now how interconnected they are with the rest of society. Next slide, please. Schools and district across the country, including Belmont, struggled this past year to shift and develop new systems and schedules to provide remote and hybrid learning models. Families have been engaged in their children's day-to-day learning like never before. Everyone has been pushed to their limits, including students, parents, teachers, and school and district leadership. We had record attendance at our virtual school committee meetings. Yet at various points, community members, including parents, unfortunately did not feel sufficiently heard or included in decision-making processes. Despite the difficult year, there were also positive developments and important supports that the school district provided. The district employed dedicated technology integration specialists to help support teachers on the delivery of remote and hybrid teaching and was able to provide technology devices for the first time to every student in the district. Free meals were available to all families in Belmont for the entire year. The School Department engaged a group of community members and staff to plan for the return to full in-person learning for the substantial majority of students in April, while continuing to offer a fully remote learning model to, to those that prefer that option through the end of the school year. The School Department invested in health and safety upgrades in our buildings with particular attention to ventilation, coordinated pool test, pool COVID testing for a number of weeks for high school staff and students, and partnered with an outside company to offer vaccinations to our middle and high school students when they became eligible in May. Teachers and staff have adapted and done many extraordinary things. The school year is certainly ending much better than it started, although the effects of the pandemic will be with us for some time to come. Next slide, please. COVID aside, the Belmont Public Schools and our students continued to receive positive recognition. Burbank and Belmont High School received national awards this year. And this slide features just a few of the many accolades that our students received for academic excellence. Next slide. The Belmont Public Schools also continued to engage students and families in important opportunities throughout the year to support one another, give back to the community, and celebrate our vibrant and diverse school community. Teachers were able to invite experts to virtual classrooms, including international leaders, authors, and community members with relevant experiences and perspectives.
You froze. Try now, Amy.
I apologize. Am I back now?
Yes.
Okay. And even though they look different from before, we were able to keep our athletic program going and students and teams continued to meet, practice, and excel in visual arts, performing arts, and music. Next slide, please. I want to take the opportunity to thank our partners. The School Committee and the Department is deeply thankful for the ongoing and continuous efforts of a long list of local organizations and volunteers who help to support our schools and our educational programming every day. These partners put in countless hours, often behind the scenes, to support our staff and students. Their leadership this year is especially appreciated. Next slide, please. Now I will turn to an overview of the FY twenty-two budget. I hope that Town Meeting members were also able to review the detailed budget reports submitted by the School Committee and the School Department. Our entire budget is also on the district's website. Next slide. It is important to ground this year's budget in the past few years. This slide shows the district's operating budget since FY nineteen, including reductions made both last year and this year. It shows supplemental federal funding the School Department has taken advantage of and funds that have been turned back to the town. Next slide. As further context, the Belmont Public Schools continues to operate in the bottom percentage of the state in terms of per-people expenditures. As of FY nineteen, Belmont spent thirty-two hundred less per student than the state average. If you multiply this amount by forty-five hundred students, this equates to over fourteen million dollars for a district of Belmont size. Next slide. Lean per-people spending results in lean staffing levels, which is something that was particularly felt this past school year. Belmont is in the bottom three percent of the staff in terms of full-time equivalent staff per a hundred students. This gap equates to over seventy staff compared to the average district of Belmont size. Seventy fewer staff, I should say. Next slide, please. The School Committee and School Department started planning for the FY twenty-two budget this past fall. We engaged with the Select Board, the Warrant Committee, and the Financial Task Force, too. The School Community, like every other department, developed two draft budgets in advance of the April vote on the override. Next slide. After the April election, the School Committee engaged in further deliberations and discussions about the budget reductions. We considered multiple options with an eye towards minimizing the impact on students and trying to maintain a core structure that allows our district to provide the level of education that our community expects. We again engaged with our town partners and saw additional community input to inform the final version of our budget. The budget presented to Town Meeting reflects the input that we received and priorities of the School Committee and the School Department. It was unanimously approved by the School Committee in mid-May. If we could now skip forward three slides to budget objectives, I'd like to next provide a quick overview of our budget priorities. There you go. Thank you. The School Committee's goals for the FY twenty-two budget included maintaining staffing levels and keeping class sizes down to the best of our abilities to maintain the existing quality of education for our students. We also want to continue to provide students with a well-rounded education that includes a rich variety of academic offerings and opportunities to engage in the arts and music, athletics, and other extracurricular experiences. This budget includes important professional development supports for our staff and positions focused on equity and access for all students. Finally, we kept in mind the important needs that we anticipate needing to meet next year in response to the pandemic in terms of academic support, social, emotional, and mental health supports in day-to-day operations. If we could now go back a couple of slides to the one with budget reductions at the top. Thank you. Perfect. We identified and implemented over two, two million dollars in reductions to the district budget this spring. The two million dollars includes positions that we had hoped to hire for next school year, including four middle school teachers in two grade levels that have higher enrollment levels, a technology integration specialist, and a part-time communications position. We reduced six point five current FTEs, including two kindergarten teachers, two kindergarten assistants, one first-grade teacher, and one fourth-grade teacher, as well as a portion of the athletic director position. We also reduced librarian and community service coordinator positions in order to support two high school teacher positions for subjects with high class sizes. Given the experience during the pandemic and our shifting needs, we decided to go deeper into reductions in our budget to prioritize several new positions to support special education and equity. One of these positions will be covered by a federal special education grant. We are cutting half a dozen extracurricular clubs and activities at the middle and high school levels, as well as some costs associated with the operations of our athletic program, including uniform supplies, equipment, and scrimmages. The budget also includes a cut of about two hundred thousand dollars to text material supplies across the entire district. Finally, we tapped into accumulated reserves in some of the district's fee-based service revolving accounts to relieve pressure on the general fund budget and reduced funds set aside for other salary costs. Next slide. This pie chart shows the allocation of funds in the FY twenty-two proposed budget. What this chart always reminds me of is how much of the district's budget consists of staff-related expenditures, including the gray pie piece, which includes our classroom and specialist teachers, the darker orange piece at the top, which includes our instructional leaders, mauve blue piece, which includes our administrative staff, and the lighter yellow piece, which includes health insurance and other benefits. If we could skip forward two slides to the table summary of the FY twenty-two budget. Thank you. This table shows a breakdown of the district's budget by category for both FY twenty-one and twenty-two. Although you see an increase of twenty-one FTEs in FY twenty-two, as was already mentioned, almost all of these positions reflect kindergarten staff that were previously funded through a revolving account due to fees previously charged to families. Health insurance is indexed at the three percent increase, to be consistent townwide. The special education category includes the restoration of reductions made in FY twenty-one of over a million dollars. Our department operating expenses and equipment are reduced by two point four percent to meet available revenue. The general fund increase from FY twenty-one to twenty-two, excluding these adjustments, is just over three percent. Next slide, please. This completes my presentation. I respectfully request that Town Meeting approve the proposed FY twenty-two budget of sixty-six million dollars, two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight. I also want to express deep gratitude to Town Meeting members and the community at large for its ongoing support for the Belmont Public Schools. The School Committee is committed to steady leadership over the next year, including careful management of our budget. I also look forward to us meeting together in person in the new high school building in the near future. Thank you for your time tonight. Superintendent John Phelan and the School Department's Director of Finance, Tony DeColagero, are on hand to help answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Amy. A very nice presentation. We now go to a discussion of the motion. Ada Baptista.
Hi, sorry about that. Thank you. My name is Ada Baptista, Town Meeting, Precinct Three. My question is, My question is around the use of, I guess the first question is the use of free cash. And I'm wondering, the general use of free cash for both school and town, if that will further exacerbate the need to potentially bring up an override vote to voters sooner rather than later.
Laurie Slapp discussed that in the previous motion. Amy, do you want to add your view? Or should I ref-
Yeah, I don't have any additional comments beyond what you provided. Thank you.
Laurie, does you want to give a, you know, a quick reprieze of your thoughts in the context of the school budget?
Sure. I don't think the use of free cash necessarily increases the structural deficit, but it does serve as, I think, a prior, a prior, a town meeting member said, to mask the gap that continues to grow. So it can give us some short-term relief, but the real danger is that we don't fully appreciate how the revenues and expenditures are diverging. And so while it can give us some short-term relief, as I said, it's of concern to the warrant committee that it will help with the FY twenty-two budget. We expect they'll be quite a bit used in FY twenty-three, but there's no doubt that in a few, in a few years out, we're really going to face some deep cuts if there's no override.
Thank you. Rafi Manjikian. Oh, I'm sorry. Just somebody. Rafi, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rafi Manjikian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Miss Slapp referred to that the schools were going to be the beneficiaries of a S R grant three. From the start of the pandemic, there were two previous S R grants that were made available. And if the town administrator or someone from the school superintendent or Tony DeColigero could answer, were we participating in the previous two S R grant rounds? And how much money and how was that dispersed between town and school?
Who would like to respond?
I, I can offer that the S R two grant, we-
Amy, identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. We will be participating in the S R two grant in FY twenty-two, which is about four hundred thousand dollars. And I will turn it to Tony or John to remind me of the specifics. I know we did participate in S R one as well.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. We did receive S R one funds that were expended in FY twenty-one. Those funds were spent on technology integration specialists to support our teachers during the school year over the twenty, the twenty-twenty-one school year. We do have S R two funds that will be using in FY twenty-two that we moved from FY twenty-one into FY twenty-two in anticipation of a concerning year next year. That amounts to about four hundred thousand dollars, and we will also apply for S R three funds, which amounts to roughly one million dollars. We hope to be able to use the S R two and S R three funds over the course of FY twenty-two and twenty-three, if possible.
Thank you. And the second question I had does not have to be answered on this call, but I wanted it on the record.
Okay, just Rafi, identify yourself and then-
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Rafi Manjikian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. In anticipation for the phase two of the high school, middle school project completing in twenty-twenty-three, what's the anticipated headcount need going into the budget year twenty-twenty-four? Like I said, it does not have to be answered, but I understand that that will be a big number going forward.
Great. Thank you, Rafi. Marie Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marie Warner, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I appreciate the sentiment that the cuts were to minimize impact on the students. Given that, what cuts were made in administrative salaries or benefits across, across the school in order to preserve teachers' positions?
Mr. Moderator, John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, the reductions that were outlined by Chairperson Checkaway were teacher positions. There were teacher aid positions. There was an administrative salary that was reduced. So we went across all three of the levels of employment. We did not reduce any of our custodians, nor did we reduce any of our secretaries. Those represent the five units of the Belmont Public Schools in terms of employers, employees.
Sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. I would add that, given how lean our district and school leadership team is, we intentionally opted not to make any cuts in those positions at this time. We did make a cut in our athletic director position to be half-time. So that was one of our higher-paying positions as well. And I think we'll have to continue to consider reductions at all levels moving forward as necessary.
Specifically, there were no cuts in salary across those leadership levels?
That was, for the record, that was Marie Warner. Yes.
Amy Checkaway, Belmont School Committee Chair. For the record, there were no reductions in salaries to district leadership positions.
Thank you, Amy.
Alan?
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman. At this, Town Clerk, at this time, there are five people in, with their hands up, starting with Deb Lockett, Travis Frank, Chris Grande, the first three.
Deb Lockett.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I have two comments.
Identify yourself, Deb.
Thank you. Yes, Deb Lockett, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member. I have two comments. One is something that I've asked repeatedly over the years, and I'm wondering if we're capturing anywhere the various cuts, what's affected by all of these cuts? If we had captured over the course of all of these, just, it's just so incredible how much we've suffered. But does anybody see a list of what we've lost over the years? The second is, I'm wondering also, who is capturing comments that people are making and recommendations and questions during town meeting in order to maybe answer, reply, otherwise follow up on what's been raised?
Thank you, Deb. In terms of the schools, her first question?
Yeah, I think that's, Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. That's a good question. I'm happy to provide that information as follow-up, Deb. In terms of the cuts over the years.
Okay, that, that's great. And I think it would be really fantastic to have that posted somewhere publicly so people can see that.
And Deb's second question was keeping track of items from-
Recommendations that people make have throughout town meeting. Again, a number of those comments that we're hearing are repeated over and over again, and it would be great to have them answered.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. Hi, Deb. There are a couple ways. First, there's a word-by-word transcript that's recorded by our court reporter. So it is not lost, number one. Number two, all of the town department heads are online and are listening and heeding what people are saying. Number three, typically, we do keep a list and I send it out if I need to and follow up with people, particularly committees, who, those chairs who are not necessarily on the Zoom call tonight or at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Travis Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Travis Frank, Precinct Five. I appreciate, Amy, your presentation and particularly detailing the number of positions that were cut and hires that weren't made and really the impact of staffing. I think what I had, take issue with is Dr. Phelan's or, sorry, Superintendent Phelan's May fourteenth report out email on the budget where he highlights, and the email is in front of me, and it says, highlights the changes in the budget are restored. Elementary positions restored, middle school positions restored, freshman sports restored, 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 reduced a teacher here, reduced thirty-five thousand dollars of technology budget and et cetera. And that email makes it sound like no big deal. We, the district didn't have any cuts. And, and I think that your presentation, Amy, and other presentations very much say that there are cuts. And yet, this email was a poor presentation of the budget and actually makes it sound like, you know, we were fine with having the cut. And I think what I guess I would like to just reiterate, actually, Ada Baptista's very first comments, which is free cash. My concern from the previous comment, too, about free cash covering costs. And I feel like there are lots of cuts and the district is being drastically impacted. But I'm not sure that that was presented properly. This presentation was good, but otherwise, sometimes they're glossed over. So thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, do you want to comment or should we proceed?
Point well made by Mr. Frank.
Identify yourself, John.
John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. I take Mr. Frank's comments and feedback and thank him for those.
Thank you. Chris Grande.
Hey, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. I think you're doing a fantastic job and it's, well, you're very underpaid.
Thank you very much.
I think you're getting about six fifty an hour right now, which is, sorry, I didn't mean to add to it either. But I had a question about the budget. The seven percent plus projected growth in the school, school budget going forward and along with the seven-plus projected percent growth in the overall budget, which we saw in the previous presentation. Can either Ms. Checkaway or Ms. Slapp talk to, speak to how, should we expect those kind of increases going forward? Seven, at the seven percent level, say for three-plus more years, five years? How, can we expect those kind of percentage increases to continue?
Ms. Slapp, let me start with you.
Sure. Laurie Slapp, Chair of the Warrant Committee. I think the answer is no. I don't think that's going to be possible. As I tried to explain at the beginning, there were some anomalies springing from the cuts that were made in FY twenty-one, especially springing from COVID, where cuts were made for one year, and it was never expected that those would be sustained. So if you restore those, the increase in FY twenty-two looks quite large, especially when we're talking about the stringent budgets. And the same thing, I think, within the schools, you, it's more helpful to look at the total budget that includes those revolving funds and grants, because there was some movement between the two accounts. As I mentioned, one example that springs to mind is the out-of-district tuitions that were paid from the grant accounts in FY twenty-one, returned to the general fund budget in FY twenty-two. So again, that shows a large increase year to year. So I don't think, so the overall for the schools, it was two and a half percent. I think that's much more in line with what we can expect in these tight times. So it was really a reaction to the extraordinary circumstances of twenty-one and COVID.
And Chris Grandy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. So if we assume, say, two to three percent plus, we are maybe short one to two percent a year on capital projects that we'd like to do, which we just don't have money for. And assuming one percent maybe for other things, we could be looking at maybe six percent annual growth of the budget, which means potentially that this budget could grow, would double every twelve years, which means for, say, the average Belmont person, if your property taxes are currently ten thousand dollars, in ten years, they'll be twenty thousand dollars, and then ten years after that, they'll be forty thousand dollars. So I, I just, I'm not saying this is definitely going to happen, and we haven't even discussed the fact that potentially we have a lot of town expenses like health insurance and pension obligations, which assume a forever positive rate of return, which, I think, which we might have learned after maybe some previous financial crises, that if you've had above-average returns for a period of time, you cannot go forward and assume average returns after a period of above-average returns. So we're potentially facing a serious issue, which may require not just marginal changes, but radical changes as to what we spend, because six percent, you know, again, in, in twenty years, you're talking about the average property tax bill being forty thousand dollars. And that just concerns me. I want to just kind of bring that up for thought. It's not something that everybody can answer right now, and I don't expect you to, to, to use your crystal ball and answer that. But I do think that when we're talking about this growth, there is this, I don't know if you want to call it-
Whoops. We lost, we lost Chris. I think he had made his point, so.
Sorry, yeah, I don't, I don't know what happened. I think I did make my point. Sorry, Chris Grandy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I won't belabor it. So yeah, just wanted to bring that up and just say that we need to be thinking about that, because growth can get very outlandish when you project it out ten years, you know, four, five, six percent doesn't sound so big. But as we see with college tuitions and other things, it can get crazy if we're not paying attention. So I'm just, I, I do think some of the other members tonight have mentioned some, some potentially radical solutions, but I think we're sort of at that point right now in Belmont. So thanks for your time, and I appreciate everybody listening to me.
Thank you, Chris. Helen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, Town Clerk. At this, four people in line with their hands up. Elizabeth Allison, Lisa Pargoli, Ji Yun Wong, and Corinne McHugh Olmstead.
Thank you, Liz Allison.
Liz Allison, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. I'd like to ask a question based on a point that's made in the Warrant Committee Report, page forty-four. In fiscal year twenty-one, the school committee and the school department converted kindergarten to a full-day program. Belmont kindergarten had previously been a half-day program with a fee-based full-day option. This change results in a shift of approximately one point one million from the kindergarten revolving account to the general fund in fiscal year twenty-two. The decision to eliminate fee-based kindergarten was made based on guidance from the state that the increased general fund cost would be offset by an increase in Chapter Seventy state aid to Belmont. However, as discussed more fully below, that anticipated aid had not material, has not materialized. And my question is, given, a million dollars is a big number, give, it's about half the very painful cuts that were made. If, if I had expected to get a big tax refund and didn't, I think I would look or say to the kids, you've got to use that old piano one more year. I know it may not be very good, but I, I don't think it would be the year that I buy a baby grand. So my question is, what was the, I am certain that this was given careful thought, why not push off the conversion of kindergarten from a fee-based program till the moment at which the state aid arrived and thereby remove the necessity to make some of these cuts?
Thank you, Liz. Amy, did you want to take that or John?
I can start and then turn it to the Superintendent, Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. So we were able to eliminate the kindergarten fees starting this past school year. We made, the school committee voted to make this change in the fall. And so families of kindergarten students this year already experienced the taking away of the fees. And I think this was seen as an important decision to put us in line with other districts. But we did also expect to recognize the offset in state aid this, this year, and that did not materialize because of COVID. We do expect to benefit from increases in Chapter Seventy aid, starting in fiscal year twenty-three, because we will receive state aid for counting each kindergarten student as one student instead of half a student, as it was in the past when we charged a fee for half of the day. But I think, you know, in, in the future, again, we would like to, to keep public education free for Belmont students, if possible. But in terms of fee-based increases in the future, depending on the budget situation, I hear your point. Superintendent, do you have anything to add to that?
Sure. John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Moderator. In FY twenty, we discussed, for several years, we discussed reducing the fee for kindergarten. We have, we are one of the last districts to do so. Kindergarten students who go half-day or go full-day and pay a fee are only recognized by our state Chapter Seventy four as part-time students and therefore are only reimbursed half the amount in Chapter Seventy. So we made the long-term plan to reduce the fee. And then moving forward, we'll forever get a one-point-oh reimbursement for every kindergarten child, thus increasing our Chapter Seventy moving forward. Timing by which this process happened in Belmont was riddled by the COVID environment, where our overall enrollment for the- where our overall enrollment for the year that we're in right now went down. We're getting a 1.0 reimbursement for every kindergarten student, but it was not enough to alter some of the reductions in enrollment we had due to COVID. So this is a long-term win for the town. It means the state will be paying a 1.0 reimbursement for every single kindergarten child moving forward, which believe, if it was not for COVID, we would have benefited by those dollars now. And we will do so forever moving forward and we'll take that burden off our kindergarten parents. This is also very much a state methodology where you have to declare it in a certain fiscal year and live with those fees and declare it early and not be able to go back. So once we put ourselves in that mode of not charging the fee, we were now, we're now locked in as a district that will have a 1.0 FTE applied to Chapter 70 for kindergarten students.
Thank you. We have four people in line. Let's see if we can do this quickly and move on. Lisa Pargoli.
Hi, thank you. Lisa Pargoli, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. I just wanted to clarify, on the budget that you mentioned, there was a cut of the athletic director's position was cut in half. I just wanted to make clarifying that no one actually lost their job or hours, but that the director, athletic director retired and that his assistant is going to be doing the part-time position as he's been doing. Is that correct?
Amy or John?
Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. That is correct, Lisa. Jim Davis did retire. And so we took advantage of that to plan to have an interim athletic director who would not cover all of his same responsibilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Corinne Olmstead.
Thank you. Corinne McHugh Olmstead, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I know in the past, we've seen the projected enrollment figures as part of the school budget presentation. I was wondering if the school department could show that. I know that the main kindergarten registration has occurred. And at other grades, we've been asked if we intend to be in the department. And certainly, given the cuts to kindergarten and first grade, the estimates must exist. So I was curious if they could be shown and perhaps compared to what we have. Maybe not this current year, because this year was certainly a little bit different, but the last year prior to COVID. So that would be 19/20. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have slides, but perhaps Amy and John could answer the question.
Yes, Superintendent, do you want to take this?
Mr. Moderator, John Phelan, Superintendent of Schools. Corinne, I can bring that document to our next school committee meeting on June 22. The short answer is our enrollment went down this fiscal year 21 by over 200 students. We believe, once we dedicated to opening in the fall of 21, full in-person, our enrollment K and one has gone back up a little bit, but we'll have the exact numbers for you. And I can either email them to you and I, and I can have them in the packet of the school committee a week from Tuesday.
Amy?
Amy Checkaway, Chair of the Belmont School Committee. This is not projected for the future, but I just wanted to note that page 21 of our report to Town Meeting has the current Belmont Public School enrollment as of May 1st.
Thank you. We have two more. If we can be brief, Jack Weiss.
Jack Weiss, Precinct One, Member of the Education Subcommittee on the Warren Committee. Just wanted to hopefully clarify and bring a little more description in an answer to Liz Allison's question. Liz, the decision to make kindergarten a full-day, all general-funded program was made before. It was not as if people knew the state aid was going to go down and made the decision anyway. The decision was made and the reduction in Chapter 70 money was attributable to enrollment as of October 1st. Now theoretically, you could say, well, at the margin, we got more state aid than we would have gotten by making that decision to go to all-day, a full-day kindergarten. However, in order to minimize the impact of declining enrollments on all communities throughout the state, the state made the decision to hold communities harmless and not reduce Chapter 70 aid, even though enrollments went down. So in the short term, the Chapter 70 aid was unimpacted by the marginal increase in the full-day kindergarten, kindergarten students. But going forward, as i-if and when total enrollment starts to increase, we'll see the benefit of that increased state aid from the marginal increase in kindergarten students.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Jess Hausman.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, Jess.
Yes, hi. I wish to speak to.
Jess, identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Jessica Hausman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I wish to add to the record of some cuts that occurred in the schools prior to the, to the override failing, the cuts that have resulted from level funding or reduced service budgeting are actually substantial. And many were targeted to avoid raising the student-teacher ratio. But among the most visible are elementary school librarians, comprehensive, no-fee music instruction for all students, curriculum coordinators for math, reading and language arts, and more at the elementary and middle school levels, resulting in disparate practices from school to school. We have also rolled back introduction of foreign language instruction to sixth grade because of the short staffing and limited budgets. There have been steep cuts to purchasing of books and supplies. The Foundation for Belmont Education called on to provide funding for purchases of textbooks and other basic teaching materials. In the last flu season, prior to the pandemic, when parents were asked to send their kids with donated boxes of Kleenex, because the school department could no longer afford to supply teachers with their own. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Travelsi. Are you there, Bill?
Yes, I just got the unmuted. Bill Travelsi, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. Yeah, I just briefly want to recognize very briefly Marie Warner's earlier point with respect to the absence of reductions at the leadership level, as I understood the point being made and confirmed within the school system. And, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We have two people in line, Bob McGaw and Steve Rosales. Mr. McGaw.
Robert McGaw, Precinct One, Town Meeting Member. I move to the question.
Let me ask Mr. Rosales, were you going to do the same or are you?
No, I had two brief points.
Okay, well, then we'll, then we'll take a vote on moving the question. Mr. McGaw has moved, if you, I was going to see if we could just terminate debate, but we can't. So Mr. McGaw's motion to terminate debate, let's vote that, please. Takes two-thirds. Motion to terminate debate. Okay, the polls are open. Vote yes if you want to terminate debate, no if you want to continue the debate. One person was in line. Obviously, it takes two-thirds. Any, any? Few seconds. All right, Glenn, let's show the results on the motion to terminate debate. So the, we have a couple more. Obviously, debate is terminated. Helen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, on the terminate debate motion on Article 22, Pat Bruchfoss, Precinct Two, votes no.
So we have one additional. So the 206 in favor, 44 opposed. Obviously, more than two-thirds. So debate is terminated on the Article 22E. So now we go to a vote on the motion under Article 22E, and that is the school budget. So the polls are open. Vote yes if you support the motion for the school budget, don't know if you oppose. And then we'll go directly to Article 16 reconsideration. A few seconds. All right, let's close the polls. Helen, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the Town Clerk on motion E of Article 22, the school budget. Pat Bruch, Precinct Two, votes yes.
All right, so we'll add that to the total. So the final vote under 22E is 246 yes, six no, and one abstention. So that completes the action on the budget. Thank you, Amy and John. And we'll now turn to, and let me make a few comments on Article, the motion to reconsider Article 16. Bear with me one second. So let me explain what we're going to do here. Michael McNamara is going to make a statement after he reads the motion, supporting his motion to reconsider. And then Lisa Terry, who was one of the three who filed the motion, filed the amendment under Article 16, will respond. And then we'll go directly to debate and under the motion to reconsider. And let me just reiterate a couple of points in my memo yesterday. Reconsideration involves a two-step process. The debate on the motion to reconsider itself, and then a discussion of the original motion, only if reconsideration is approved. Town meeting time emphasizes that reconsideration should set a high bar, should not be taken lightly. Belmont's two-thirds requirement for a motion to reconsider is a reflection of that high bar. It is not meant to be an opportunity for the losing side simply to reopen the debate, because they are disappointed by the original vote and want to reverse the outcome. The scope of the motion to reconsider is narrow. It's a procedural question, and I will limit discussion to the procedural issue. It is intended only to debate new information or other considerations that did not come to light in the initial discussion. So, and then finally, accordingly, in the debate on the motion to reconsider, I will not allow any discussion of the merits of fuel tank proposal. So with that, we'll turn to Mr. McNamara, who will make the motion, and then I'll get any votes. Mr. McNamara.
Yes, so I first, if you can just take one moment, sorry, Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I can just take one moment before I, I do my statement to thank the people who helped create the amendments.
Michael, you need to, you need to move the question first here. Do you see it on your screen?
Yes, Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, moved that Article 16A and 16B and amendments be reconsidered.
Now let me get the votes. Adam Dash, the Select Board.
Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. The Select Board recommends favorable action on the motion for reconsideration by a vote of two to one.
And then Laurie Slapp for the Warren Committee.
Laurie Slapp, Chair of the Warren Committee. The Warren Committee does not support the motion for reconsideration. The vote was nine to four.
So four yes and nine no, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. McNamara, go ahead and. Was there another comment?
I just was going to report from the Capitol.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know whether, I thought you hadn't voted. Anne Marie.
Our article. Anne Marie Mahoney, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, Chair of the Capitol Budget Committee. After considerable discussion, the Capitol Budget Committee decided not to vote on the move for reconsideration, but instead voted unanimously to reaffirm their support for the Capitol Budget Tank project as defined both last year and this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Okay, now, Michael, go ahead.
Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I just want to take a moment before I start my statement to thank the Article 17 Capitol Budget Committee for working on Article 17, 16, sorry. And also want to thank the people putting forward the amendment on Article 16, even though I disagree with them and I'm asking for a motion reconsider. I just want to say I greatly respect them and I greatly respect all the great work that has gone on in this process, including Mr. Whitmer for talking to me about scope. So to my fellow Town Meeting Members, and in particular, my constituents in Precinct Seven, I come before you a more humble man. I originally voted for both the amendments to Articles 16A and B. I thought I had made a sound decision. However, due to late-breaking information from WNS Consulting, under questioning about environmental tests being done and discussion about the underground site, I, along with other Town Meeting Members, was confused and thrown off balance. I feel WNS Consulting had more to tell Members. Many Members wanted to hear more about the, from the firm that we hired and calling the question cut out of vital discourse that would have informed our decision-making. Receiving complete factual information goes to the heart of democratic governance and the rule of law. And as an elected official, I think we are entitled to hear answers to those questions. I would note many other Members also had questions about other matters, shown by the large number of people waiting in line at the time. A significant number of people voting against calling the question despite a long debate shows new Town Meeting Members wanting to speak and be heard. Some Town Meeting Members also had outstanding questions about the structure of the debate, which was confusing. For example, some wanted to know more about the implications of splitting their vote. For example, voting for Amendment 16A but not 16B. That was also mentioned by the moderator in addressing the question to a Town Meeting Member earlier. My motion to reconsider falls squarely within the parliamentary procedure, and the two-thirds threshold recognizes both the seriousness of the matter, but also Town Meeting Members' right to revisit their own decisions if those decisions have been based on incomplete information or otherwise flawed. I hope my motion to reconsider will allow us to discuss this matter in a complete and full way. The town has voted that a total full evaluation informed, confident meeting members. Sincerely, Michael McNamara, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is Meg Pichoni from the Town Clerk's office. We have two points of order, one from Elizabeth Dion and one from Robert McGaw.
Sure, Elizabeth Dion.
Yes, this is my question and several other people. Oh, sorry. This is Elizabeth Dion, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, Member of the Warren Committee, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. This is not only my question, but several other people have texted me with the same question. Can you please clarify what you mean by additional information? Because I am looking at the town bylaw and there is no reference made to a requirement for additional consideration for reconsideration. It's merely a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting.
Yeah, the bylaw does, but I, I talked repeatedly in my email to Town Meeting Members and, and tonight, I referred to, well, referred to Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time is very, very clear that, that reconsideration is a high bar and that it is not simply an opportunity to continue debating a question. And traditionally, over the years, the focus of reconsideration at Town Meetings across the state has been on identifying new information or other factors. It hasn't say new information alone. So that's the tradition. And so I'm following the long tradition. No, it's not in the bylaw, and that's why in the comments that Mr. McNamara said he didn't focus just on new information. He made a couple of other points, and I think they're within scope. So, so that's the reality of it.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, and Mr. McGaw, you had a point of order? Are you there, Bob?
Robert McGaw, Precinct 1. The fact that people are in line to speak is not a new matter.
Well, we haven't gotten there, Mr. McGaw, so let's continue the discussion. So now I'd like to turn to Lisa O'Terry, who was, as we well know, one of the three sponsors of the amendment that was approved. And so she will make a couple of slides and a brief statement, and then we will go immediately to discussion of this motion. Ms. O'Terry.
Yes, thanks. Lisa O'Terry, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and for all the time you took answering questions this week. It's much appreciated, and thank you, Town Meeting Members. We respectfully submit that there are no grounds for reconsidering a Town Meeting vote on Article 16 amendments. The amendments were debated for nearly three hours on Wednesday night, and all relevant information and arguments were discussed regarding the current tanks. They comply with the mass DEP regulations. They're not leaking. We also discussed the extent of Belmont's liability for the current tanks and the status of third-party insurance. And we also discussed the town's proposed replacement plan, whether two 6,000-gallon tanks are actually needed. You will recall that we also discussed the impact of above-ground tanks on Belmont residents and how the proposed plan fit in with the town's green energy goals. Also discussed was the reliability of a single cost estimate to complete the project. Both amendments passed following full debate. Town Meeting Members have already voted on these amendments. There's no new information, and there's no new crisis that would subvert the Town Meeting process. Next slide, please. So why are we here? This project actually has two phases.
Mr. Moderator, excuse me. This is Nancy Caselli at the Town Clerk's Office. We have a point of order from Jeffrey Lubian.
Jeff Lubian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know this is a slippery slope and a fine line here, but I'm struggling right now. I thought the merits right now are discussing if this should be revisited with new information or a misunderstanding of information. To me, this is listing through information that was already discussed about the pros and cons of the, of the tank, not the motion at hand right now.
Well, I don't agree. I mean, what she's reviewing is what was decided. I've gave both, both Michael McNamara and Lisa O'Terry a little bit of room here. And, but I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you. I would ask people, we can't have a debate if we have everybody raising a point of order. So if you feel you need to, please do, but it's, it's going to interrupt the debate if every speaker gets interrupted by a point of order. So thank you. So Lisa O'Terry, please continue.
Okay. Lisa O'Terry, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. This is the only slide. There's no more slides, so please hang on.
Thank you.
So one thing I thought might be helpful to just clarify. This project actually has two phases, removal of the tanks and replacement of new tanks. This is all, everything we discussed last week. I just wanted to reframe it so that we could be clear. Ideally, one would immediately follow the other, but they're separable. The second is still in planning stage. The first can be implemented if the need arises. And just, you know, again, what we discussed last week was that the Town Meeting in June 2020 appropriated $540,000. Now, the amendments that were debated on Wednesday do not impact this. The $540,000 is available now. It's not open for reconsideration, and it's not at risk. There's nothing preventing the town from removing the current tanks should they choose. But what about replacement? We talked about this on Wednesday. A proposal to install two above-ground fuel tanks in a crowded DPW in proximity to residents. The Article 16 amendments were passed to allow time for a better process to come together as a next step. And while the replacement option, while the replacement portion of the project has been paused and is incomplete, is not failed, Belmont should seek to lower the overall risk and impact to residents. We would not have filed the amendments had the town been open to this discussion this past year. Your vote last week supported our efforts. Please vote no on reconsideration. We don't feel that there's any new information or crisis to present, and that's the end of my slide.
Great, thank you very much, Lisa. Let me make a couple of comments before the debate. I referred to Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time is Belmont's Roberts Rules of Order, and it's a guide to our Town Meeting. And for some people who aren't aware of that, I want to underscore that fact. The other thing I wanted to mention, both Michael and Lisa have referred to emails with me. We haven't had a lot of reconsideration motions in my time. And it is, as the points of order have already asked, it's a bit of a gray area. And what I've tried to do with both Michael and with Lisa is to steer them in a way that is consistent with my interpretation of what is allowed under this reconsideration. And they've both, you know, been helpful in doing that. They, I think they both did go a little, as Mr. Lubian raised, in one case, a little bit beyond the reconsideration portfolio. But they were, nevertheless, were focused on the key fact. So I just wanted to explain that. And my role, just last comment, my role is to try to help as best as possible Town Meeting work smoothly. So in this particular case, I've tried to do that with Michael McNamara and Lisa O'Terry and how we structured this discussion. So with that, we can begin the debate, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, Town Clerk. At this time, there are 11 people in line. Adam Dash, Ellen Schreiber, and Michael Chesson are the first three.
Mr. Dash.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Dash, Chair of the Select Board, Town Meeting Member at Large. Just wanted to give a little context of the discussion that we'd had earlier this evening at the Select Board regarding the reconsideration. I should note, I understand reconsideration is extraordinary. I'd say that so is the situation in which we find ourselves with the tanks. I should point out that nearly all of the bodies closely involved with this tank issue over the years, Capitol Budget War Committee Select Board, are all in favor of removing the tanks now. This is a, because it's a serious issue and a liability to the town, as you've heard.
But Adam, we're talking, Adam, I'm sorry. That's the merits of the issue, and we're talking about reconsideration.
Yep. Not all the facts and questions got out before the debate was terminated. There were a lot of people in line to speak, as you've heard, and there were differences in votes between people between the amendments to 16A and 16B, which caused me a little bit of trouble because I was wondering why someone would vote yes on one and no on the other when they were basically mirror images of each other, which led me to start to think that maybe people were confused or after they'd thought about the first motion, the First Amendment, that they'd changed their mind. I can't get into the details, as the moderator stated, without reconsideration passing. So if you want to hear more about this, you could vote reconsideration. We can get into the details. But there are, there are bits of new information that have been run down since Town Meeting last was in session regarding insurance, regarding other town and other town and its DPW situation, regarding detailed price differentials between above and below-ground tanks. And so, I mean, all of these things have been discussed. Also, we've also since discussed pushing this matter to the fall. And of course, the issue with that being that it would push the work off a very long time because we would not be able to get anything done prior to winter. I think it's important to ask if town, I need to know the Town Meeting is sure about this. I mean, look, if the answer is no, the answer is no. But I need to know to make sure that the Town Meeting Members are absolutely understanding what this is about and are absolutely sure about the vote on these amendments because the situation here is grave and the consequences to the town are extremely serious. So I felt that we had to do what was right and what we believe, and that putting this thing off is not a good idea. That's my feeling on it, and I believe, and you heard, the Select Board voted two to one in favor of reconsideration. Again, understanding this is a high bar. Don't ask this lightly, but this is one of those situations where it's actually warranted. Thank you.
Ellen Schreiber.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, this is Ellen Schreiber, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8, and Member of the Warrant Committee. I am supporting strongly reconsideration. I believe that everybody I have spoken to has, there has been massive confusion about what happened the other night. And, you know, lots of people asking questions and saying that information wasn't presented that was presented. I am very happy to hear there is now additional information to answer some of the questions that people asked. But at the end of the day, I believe that Town Meeting made a bad decision, and I understand that reconsideration is not about making a bad decision. There is more information. I think this was a grave error. I think we will come to regret it. And I would like to ask Town Meeting to please support reconsideration. Thank you.
I'll do Michael Chesson and then Mark Palolo. Michael?
Michael Chesson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I was elected to Town Meeting the same year as Mr. McNamara. So I lack the institutional memory of many other Town Meeting Members. I understand from you what you just said, that reconsideration of a motion, a vote on a motion, has been rare. And I don't know whether those motions to reconsider in the past reached the required two-thirds majority, nor do I know whether the result of the second vote on the article at issue was different. Whether the motion to reconsider tonight passes or not, I think it may set an unfortunate precedent for future Town Meetings. Such a motion could have been made after the vote on the commuter bikeway through town, but was not. In fact, the losers on the vote on each article accepted the result and moved on. There is a high bar set for such motions and for very good reasons. But whatever the result, each time a motion, each time such a motion to reconsider is made, it will require additional time of Town Meeting Members to discuss and debate and additional energy and effort by all of you who make our meetings possible. Mr. Moderator, as you said at the beginning of the session tonight, putting on a session of Town Meeting is not free. It costs scarce resources. In future, multiple motions to reconsider could be made, perhaps in the same Town Meeting or even in the same session on a particular night. And if allowed under parliamentary procedure, we could be facing gridlock in Town Governments, or at the very least, much longer Town Meetings.
Does that complete your statement, Michael?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Palolo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Palolo, Select Board Member, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. First and foremost, I certainly want to thank Michael McNamara in terms of his graciousness and approach and thoughtfulness around this matter. And we did, we did say this at Select Board Meeting, we felt as though it took some courage to bring forward the reconsideration motion, considering how divisive this issue has been and how the emotions have risen around it and is divided. I'm strongly against reconsideration. I don't think a point of people were confused is a reason to reconsider. In fact, the votes on 16B were higher than 16A. Perhaps people individually changed their votes, but there was more of a majority in 16B, supported the amendment on 16B than 16A. So I'm not certain where they were confused. Moving the question isn't a reason for reconsideration as well. And also, I mean, we've all talked to people that are confused, wanted to change their vote or felt differently about things. So suggesting that somehow I've talked to a lot of people, and they're saying, why? What happened? I was confused. I haven't seen that. All I've seen is continued division within this town. And I think it will be, I think it will continue to be divided. I don't think there's any more information that we, that can come forward that would change votes, frankly, in a reason for reconsideration. Perhaps the folks that were on the losing side would like to see that so they can try to win again. But I don't see any additional information. I didn't believe that Weston and Sampson was cut off. They spoke clearly about what the contamination was about. What I am hopeful for, Mr. Moderator, is that at the Select Board meeting tonight, it wasn't me that raised it initially, it was my colleague Roy Epstein and Adam Dash as well, that we all sort of said that we will work together if this motion for reconsideration does not pass, and if it were to pass and the amendments were to still be successful, that we would work together as colleagues with the Capitol Budget Committee to do further and work with DPW and with the Town Administrator to do further analysis and provide further information, to have hearings within the community so that perhaps at the next vote, we can be more unified around this matter. I am very concerned about the division that this has caused. I've been concerned since the override vote in terms of division that that has caused and a number of other articles that we've debated. I think the time is to move forward with, with accepting what the vote was, realizing that we'll continue to be divided, and that we work together for a solution in the fall. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman, the Town Clerk. At this time, there are 18 people with their hands in the air. Jason Cotola, Peg Calnann, and Melissa McIntyre are the first three.
Jason Cotola, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jason Cotola, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, and resident of C Street, the DPW Yard. I support the motion to reconsider because I don't believe we sufficiently got into the question of what the risks are to those of us in the community by leaving the tank in the ground, by delaying the removal of the tanks in the ground. And in particular, I'm concerned about the risk from, the risk of a leak underground. I wish to ask questions of the relevant experts and that we deliberate at those points to better appreciate the risks. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg Calnann.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peg Calnann, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. Regarding other considerations, I believe that many Town Meeting Members who voted in opposition to Article 16 thought that they could move easily, and I'm quoting, "back to the drawing board," end quote, as was referenced in social media since last Wednesday. The defeat of Article 16 is going to result in a lengthy delay in resolving the critical issue that we have of an uninsured liability, namely, the underground storage tank at the DPW Yard.
Peg, we're getting, you're getting into the meat of the issue here beyond reconsideration.
Well, I believe that further discussion is essential so that people can under, I don't think that people understood fully what the significance to the town and the risk to the town was of their vote. And so I would ask people to please support reconsideration. Thank.
Thank you, thank you, Peg. Melissa McIntyre.
Hi, this is Melissa McIntyre, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8.
Hi, this is Melissa McIntyre, town meeting member precinct eight. I am voting to support the motion for reconsideration. I voted last week and I think I made the right vote for me in the absence of what felt like enough information or clear enough information for me. I voted what felt to be the conservative choice and I voted against the amendments. Because I was worried about the possibility that if we didn't know enough about the safety of the tanks and that information seemed to be coming out toward the end of our lengthy discussion. That any leaks that formed would be catastrophic and therefore removing the tanks was the right choice. Ironically, if the debate were to continue and I felt more convinced that there was not an imminent risk of a catastrophe catastrophic failure, I might actually be in support of the amendments, but given that the debate was not continued, I felt like I had to vote against them.
Let me raise, excuse me, one second, Melissa. One of the things that now three people, Adam Dash, Peg Calnann, yourself, talking about the danger of the leaking tank. That's beyond the scope of this, uh, motion to reconsider. So I respect all of you and I, and, and the points you're making. But the danger of a possibly leaking tank is not within the scope of this motion. So.
I, I apologize if that's the case. It's not, that truly is not my intent. I was.
No, I understand. And that's why, and I have great respect for all of you and you and Adam, Peggy and yourself. So I'm just trying to guide people. I'm not trying to be critical.
Okay. So, um, so I guess I'll just say lastly that I, I am voting to support the motion for reconsideration because I was, I felt like myself that I was confused last week. And I would encourage other people to also support the motion so that we can get enough accurate information to make a complete and careful decision on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, town clerk. At this time, there are nineteen people in line. Elizabeth Dion, Bill Tribelsi and Ellis, and Ellen Sugarman are the first three.
Elizabeth Dion, you're next.
Elizabeth Dion, town meeting member precinct two, member of the warrant committee and chair of the community preservation committee. I'd like to speak to the suggestion that a motion to reconsider is undemocratic or contrary to the rule of law. This is absolutely not the case. Uh, motions to reconsider are clearly contemplated within Belmont's bylaws and by town meeting time. Town meeting has the right to change our minds based on further consideration, not just further information. And as most agrees example of this, I will remind town meeting that two years ago, we reconsidered a, a motion that we'd originally approved to lengthen the term of the moderator from one to three years. Uh, that, that motion passed rather comfortably. And then as people thought about it, they became very uncomfortable with their vote. Uh, the motion to reconsider passed and then town meeting changed its mind and voted to maintain the moderator term at one year. Uh, I actually thinking that Mike has done a fabulous job, had voted to, to maintain three years. Um, in hindsight, I actually think I was wrong and town meeting made the right decision and nobody has changed their minds on that. And I, I think that is very analogous to what's happening here. That it is on occasion, not only acceptable, but important for town meeting to have the opportunity. I agree with the two thirds threshold. We should not do this often. We should not abuse it. Uh, I think it's been a sufficiently painful process that nobody will abuse it or wants to. Uh, but again, I strongly encourage my fellow members of town meeting to vote for reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Tribelsi.
Bill Tribelsi, town meeting member precinct seven. Uh, a little concerned and puzzled. There seems to be a selective, I don't want to, I guess a deafness. The Ms. O'Terry said we should use the five hundred and forty thousand to get the tanks out of the ground in the following range, zero to two years. So there's this notion that the tank should stay in is not true.
Bill, 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 excuse me, this is, that's, I, I gave a little attitude to, as I said, to both Michael and Lisa. But that's getting into the substance here. So, uh, not to the motion before us.
Okay. I'll, I hope maybe this will be, these are some of the quotes, late breaking information, incomplete information. We need answers to questions and quote, not all facts and questions. Mr. Fair and Mr. Bunia from Weston and Sampson spoke clearly, distinctly and answered questions with regard to pre-existing contamination and the integrity of the tanks as they stand today. And, and those, there was no mystery and that's part why the second B, the, the question, the, the yeses went up because there was clarity, because at the tail end of A, there wasn't clarity. They clarified, more people understood the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ellen Sugarman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Ellen.
Okay. Ellen Sugarman, precinct eight. I have a question which I believe is within the scope of this and I'd ask the moderator to direct it. About the tanks, it's about process. Lisa O'Terry said tonight, we still have the five hundred and forty thousand. I think that was the number and it can still be used regardless of what happens with these amendments. And yet I recall hearing Anne Marie Mahoney, I think, and others say that all the money would then be turned back to capital budget and there would be no money for this project. So I ask this because in terms of reconsidering or not, does trying to figure out what to do with the situation still have money to work with or no? And I'm hearing exact opposites.
I, I will allow, I'll turn to Adam Dash. Or Anne Marie, go ahead.
Yes.
All right. Okay.
I'm starting to feel like Cinderella here.
Oh, come on, go on, Anne Marie. Let, let me, uh, let me make a comment first.
Sure.
And that is, uh, since Ms. O'Terry did raise this issue and I, I think it's worth clarifying. So I will ask Anne Marie here to answer it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anne Marie Mahoney, town meeting member precinct one and chair of the capital budget committee. The five hundred and forty thousand dollars that was allocated last year for this project was for a specific project, replacing the DPW tanks above ground for both gas and diesel for obviously the use of the DPW and the other town vehicles. Uh, at this juncture, a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars of that money has been used as part of that project. That is capital money. If this fails and there is no additional money allocated, then the project does die and that capital money reverts to capital. It becomes a capital turnback and can be used for another project. It cannot be turned into something different. Uh, the five forty and what's left of it cannot be used for further analysis. It cannot be used for a different project at the DPW. It can, it cannot be used simply to remove the tanks because that was not the project that was approved by town meeting last year.
Mr. Moderator, may I also, uh, just to fill in the other two pieces of this?
Yes, Mr. Dash.
Now, Adam Dash, chair of the select board, town meeting member large. And that, that's the five forty, which is the one of the three pieces of money for this project. The other two pieces was that were the, the money from Belmont Light, which, and then the other part with the article sixteen, uh, water in the sewer money. So the water in the sewer money are what town meeting is vote, voted on and if it's reconsiderable, vote on again. Belmont Light, if, if, if everyone reconsidered this project and we were going to go forward, we would have to go back to the capital budget committee to get the money that they have left, which I believe capital budget has indicated they'd be willing to talk about doing that. And then the Belmont Light would have to be willing to put their money back in, which, you know, we'd have to talk to Belmont Light about that. And then the water sewer money town meeting would have to appropriate that because just the project is not five hundred and forty thousand dollars. As you know, that's why we're here. I mean, it's way more than that. So five hundred and forty is not enough to do the project. You need all three of those revenue streams. Uh, and the town meeting is only voting on the one, the water sewer part of it. So even if this passed, we still have to go back to capital budget and to, so if you put it off to the fall, you know, you'd have to keep the capital budget committee and the select board and Belmont Light back in the project for it to go forward at a later date. Not to say that that wouldn't happen, but that's just the process.
All right. Thank you. Um. Ellen, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk. At this point, there are eighteen people in line. Judith Ananian Sarno, Marie Warner and John Buckley are the first three.
Judith.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Judith.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm just commenting, uh, based on the last question, Judith Ananian Sarno, precinct three and one of the co-sponsors. My question is, uh, to the officials based on what Anne Marie just said, if it can't come from capital budget and we didn't think that money was appropriated by town meeting. My question is, why can't we cap, cap the tanks and empty them and stop, stop using them and that wouldn't be a big expense.
Judith, um, I allow the answer to the question because it had been raised by Lisa. But now we're getting, that's getting into the, uh, specifics of the, uh, discussion of the tanks. So it's beyond the scope.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, are we being odd to answer that question or, or not?
No.
Okay.
It's beyond the scope. I took, uh, go ahead, Judith.
No, uh, Mr. Moderator, so we couldn't get a legal opinion on that?
Not now, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Marie Warner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marie Warner, town meeting member precinct six. Um, I have a question just on the process of consideration. Mr. McNamara posted on Facebook that he had spoken to a number of people before he decided to change his vote. Um, I also note that also on Facebook, another town meeting member had been, uh, trying to recruit. Voted no. I'd like to understand, um, what came about to make Mr. Mr. McNamara decide to file for reconsideration. What was, what went on in that conversations with other town meeting members that he cited in his post?
Well, those are private conversations and, uh, I don't think it's fair to ask out of Mr. McNamara or anybody, what private conversations he or she had.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. John Buckley.
John Buckley, precinct two. Um, I'd like to call the question.
Mr. Buckley has called the question on reconsideration to terminate debate.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, town clerk, and there are sixteen people with their hands in the air.
So obviously this isn't debatable, requires two thirds vote. So let's put up the motion. Glenn, I think you have it there. So the polls are open. This requires two thirds. Will, if it passes, that ends debate. And we go immediately to a vote on reconsideration. If it fails, we'll continue with the people in line. And I just want to express while you're voting, my appreciation for people's understanding of the need to, uh, keep this focus on a narrow motion, especially because I understand the emotions on both side of this debate are very, very high. So and I appreciate the positive spirit in which people have approached the debate. A few more seconds. Make sure we have, I'll give it five more seconds. Make sure we have all the votes. So Glenn, do you want to show the tally here? Please close the ball. So Ellen.
Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk on the motion to terminate debate on Article sixteen reconsideration, Pat Bruce, precinct two votes, yes.
So the final tally on the motion to terminate debate is one eighty-four in favor, fifty-three opposed, one abstention. Obviously, well, more than two thirds. So debate is terminated and we now go directly to Michael McNamara's motion to reconsider Article sixteen. This requires the two thirds vote. Let me ask, take a pause here because I don't want there to be any confusion on the vote. Is, does anybody want to raise some kind of a question about what this vote does or doesn't do? Cool. If it, all right, it does. I don't see any question if, but I'll reiterate, uh, if it passes, if the motion passes by more than two thirds, we then proceed to a debate on sixteen A and B, as if our final vote had not been taken. If this motion fails by less than two thirds, then that ends consideration of Article sixteen and we will then dissolve the two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting. What are we thinking? Few more seconds here. What are we thinking? Oh. What are we thinking?
Thank you.
All right. Let's close the polls. Um, Glenn, do you want to show the vote, please? So one oh seven in favor, one twenty-seven opposed. Ellen, you have a.
I do. Yes, Mr. Moderator, Ellen O'Brien Cushman, the town clerk on the motion to reconsider Article sixteen, Pat Bruce, precinct two votes, yes.
So the final tally is one oh eight, I believe, in favor. One twenty-seven opposed. Obviously falls short of the two thirds required. So the motion to reconsider is defeated, which dispenses with all action under Article sixteen. So the only remaining action is to dissolve town meeting. Move that the annual town meeting be dissolved. Uh, I will ask for unanimous consent on that motion. There is no business coming before the town. So the town meeting votes unanimously to dissolve the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting. It's been a long haul, folks, uh, and I thank everybody for their largely goodwill and, uh, patience and, uh, we'll pick up probably in the fall. Thank you very much.
Many Chinese companies are bracing for the impacts. Uh, they're focusing more on the domestic market. For example, Huawei has developed its own operating system called Hongmeng, uh, trying to, uh, continue to make more profits within China. Uh, at the same time, Beijing is planning to push back as well. Uh, China is also preparing for its own blacklist. So more and more multinational companies will find themselves sandwiched in between these two superpowers.
Jiao Wen Feng from the BBC's.
Jiao Wen Feng from the BBC's Chinese Service in Washington. The BBC understands that the British Prime Minister Boris Johnson and his Australian counterpart Scott Morrison have agreed the broad terms of a trade deal between the two countries. A formal announcement is expected in the coming